Mayor Breitker.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Allbritton.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
And Councilmember Kuzinski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Public comment.
Dear Mayor, so far we have one person raising their hands. I know that there are going to be others, but the first person that I see is Zareen Kamani.
Great.
Zareen Kamani, can you hear us? You have to unmute your phone. There you go. Zareen Kamani. One last time, Zareen Kamani. Can you hear us? All right, let's go back to that person. Let's try the next speaker, which is Christina Brownlow. Chris, can you hear us?
Yes, hi Russell, how are you all?
Good to see you. Good to talk to you.
Hey Chris.
Hi everyone, happy Hanukkah. I hope you're all doing well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I think a lot of us know there is an issue at, well, I don't want to say traffic concern, but it came to us, the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association, I would say two to three weeks ago, that there is a proposed northbound turn lane at Sheridan and 148th. And we were asked to get feedback from our residents. So with the help of one of our board members, Jason Helberg, we drafted an email and we started an email campaign. We maybe had three to four responses in favor of this, but overwhelmingly, there were 35 to 40 opposed to this turn lane. And everyone was unanimous in expressing their concern over increased traffic and speeding, which are already issues. So we brought this up at our general membership meeting last night, and some council members were present. And it was suggested we create a motion to request a resolution. And I would like to read to you the email we sent today, if I may. It says, "Dear Council, at the December general meeting of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association membership, and in the presence of a quorum, a motion was made by Tony Brown and seconded by Bob Parker to recommend the town council adopt a resolution opposing the proposed traffic modification at Sheridan Street on Southwest 148th Avenue, also known as Volunteer Road. The motion passed unanimously. The resolution would support the overwhelming response of Sunshine Ranches residents who are against the change, what change in northbound turn lane at the Sheridan 140th intersection, as they feel it will result in more traffic and speeding, both issues which are already of great concern. An email campaign sent through the SRHOA received numerous responses archived to provide additional evidence in support of the motion. Your attention to this matter is greatly appreciated." Thank you. Chris Brownlow, President. So we sent that to you all at 1:51 PM today. And I just want to thank you for allowing me to read it into the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, the next speaker is, so the phone number 305-986-8007. Can you hear us?
I don't wish to speak at this time, Russell. I'll wait a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, the next speaker is, I believe Doug McKay. Doug, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. I just want to make a comment here and read something briefly related to our boards that you are going to be approving for tonight. So what I'd say is, unlike my predecessors, when Steve won the election, I still wanted to give back to the community. And I felt that being on a town board would be a good way to show my continued commitment to the community. I called Gary. I told him that I'd like to be put back, give back to the community and be put on the complan board. Wasn't a problem. It was good. I thought it would make sense because Steve, he had appointed Steve on the complan board. And I thought switching seats could be appropriate. I was absolutely floored when I heard that a few residents were attacking a volunteer board appointment. A board that has absolutely no power, but simply recommends things to the council when directed. When I heard how bad that Gary was getting attacked, I called him and told him that I would gladly withdraw my position. And thanked him very much, even though I know he would have stood his ground and kept me on that board. It is not worth the aggravation and grief for a volunteer board to have to go through that. So I told Gary, I said, "Look, I'm good. Find someone else. I'm okay. I can still attend the meetings. I don't have to be on the board." So anyway, in that process, although that Steve was elected, I received over 2,000 votes and was represent more than 43% of the electorate. I would have hoped the council would have wanted to reach across the aisle and make amends. Instead, those who lobbied against me clearly forget that it only takes 560 voters to sign a petition to do this election all over again. So be careful what you wish for. It's much better to make friends than enemies. So I just want to apologize. Gary shouldn't have gotten grief over residents wanting to continue to participate. And I was just a little shocked. So I think everybody has to maybe think about that a little bit moving forward. That's all I wanted to say. And thanks, gentlemen, and good luck. Stay safe.
Thank you, Doug, for those comments. I really appreciate those. That's, I think that's, you know, I'm disappointed as well. So, but thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
Bye.
All right. The next speaker, well, let's go back to Zareen Kamani and see if I can get her on the phone. Zareen Kamani, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes, I'm so sorry. Initially, when you gave me access, I mean, nobody was able to hear me. First of all, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to talk. This is the first time I'm attending this town hall meeting. I don't have any formal letter or any email. I did not do anything like that. But I spoke to multiple people. And then finally, someone gave me the number for Hartman.
Mr. Kamani, we're having some difficulty hearing you. I don't know if you're in an area where you can get a little bit better reception, but we can't hear you.
In this town. Mike has done a lot of things for this town and never asked for anything. My daughter Samantha also. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Dee.
Okay, Mayor, I apologize for that. I had an outage over here, but I'm back.
No problem. No problem. Is there any further public comment?
There are no additional hands raised, no.
Okay. All right. Board reports.
Mayor, we have George Morris wishing to speak.
Okay. Thank you.
George, can you hear us?
Yes, do you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hey, guys, how you doing? Yeah, George Morris, just going to report on two boards. The drainage board, which I'm the chair, and on the comp board, which I was the vice chair, and by default became the chair because of Steve's resignation. Real quick, that was a deal. Nonetheless, the comp board, basically, we had a discussion on how to limit the extent of the impact of the new residential development in Southwest Ranches. We came up with a format of what we're going to do moving forward. I think we're going to come up with some really positive things forward to the council. So that's exciting to know coming into 2021. It's something that is needed with regards to protecting our animals and right, you know, all the rights for horses and barns, et cetera. So that was the biggest issue there on the comp board. And on the drainage board, pretty much, again, both boards are sunsetting. On the drainage board, we discussed the last month's storm event, which we all know about, and some discussions of new projects that are coming up. Nothing too exciting. But that's pretty much the extent of it because it was the last meeting of the year and we are sunsetting. There wasn't really any new information to report. Most of the council people were there. So that pretty much covers everything. Again, it's been a pleasure serving on the boards for many, many, many years. I can't even tell you how many. And I look forward to possibly being reappointed and serving the town as it may need my services and experience. So thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Appreciate. Appreciate it. And thanks for filling in on the comp board. As the chair. Any other board reports?
We have no other hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. All right, great. Council member comments. Anybody like to go first?
Sure, why not?
Thanks, Gary.
Hey, break the ice. I got a target on my back, by the way. Nobody can see it. So just thought I'd mention that. All kidding aside. Got something we, I'd like to talk about, a few things, actually. The advisory boards, I'll wait till the very first advisory board, too. I have a lot of, I have several pages of comments on that. So when that comes out. But just a couple of FYI things. The town calendars are out. They're available at town hall. Just need to give them a call and arrange for pickup. And I forgot the exact cost, but it's, you can call Susan at town hall and get them. And they're really nice. They've got really great pictures of all the livestock and everything like that from this year's theme. And it has all the winners of the photo contest. And it's really, I have a copy of it right here. This was the cover. Yeah, you probably can't see it because the sunset's in the way. But it's really got some great pictures in it. And I want to thank everybody that entered and put into it. And while we're talking about livestock, I want to segue into an idea that we, myself and the town administrator put together. Russell, have you got the, and Russell, and Russell also. Do you have that one demo of the sign that we could put up? Okay. As you guys know, fireworks are legal now in the town, in the state of Florida, three days out of the year, three nights, three days. December 31st, January 1st, and July 4th. To be a little bit proactive, I, most people don't know that you can, that it's now legal to do that on those three days. We're going to put out these signs along Griffin Road and Sterling Road, basically where the high traffic volume is, and around the areas that show it's a livestock area. Respect your neighbors, be mindful of nearby livestock when using fireworks. We're not promoting fireworks. We're just making everybody aware that there are horses, cows, chickens, goats, and dogs and cats that are very susceptible to the loud noises. It drives them crazy, you know, especially with thoroughbreds and stuff like that. So we want to make sure, we want to remind everybody of that. And I'm.
I love this now.
Davy PD, they're not going to respond. However, they will respond for gunshots. So things of that nature. So I just want to emphasize that. If you think it's a gunshot, you know, please call. I don't want anybody to think otherwise. Well, we're going to put these out along the main traffic ways for all the residents to see. And it's a reminder. It's just something we want to be proactive on. We can reuse the signs three days out of the year. Well, they'll be up for two, and then we'll put them back up, collect them all, and put them back up on July 4th as a reminder to everybody. So I just wanted to show you that as a proactive way that we're doing this. And I need to ask a question to David. Are you going to, I don't want to take away your thunder. Are you going to talk about volunteering Sheridan?
I absolutely am.
Okay, good. Then I'll leave that off my list. I just wanted to make sure.
Gary, just a second. Bob, did you have something you wanted to add on the? You're on mute. You're on mute, Bob.
Thank you. I had a question on those three days. Is that a new law that was just passed? Or is that just something that Florida's always done?
No, a new law that was adopted the last legislative session.
Got it. So if people call the police on July 4th or any of those holidays, they're not going to respond for fireworks complaints?
Keith.
I thought, I didn't know if you were asking or stating. Your statement is correct.
It's a question.
Yeah, it's correct.
So we just passed a noise ordinance in town that, you know, for any reasonable person. Our noise, is noise separate from the fireworks or?
Fireworks are included in our noise ordinance, but state law trumps us on those specific holidays that Councilmember Jablonski outlined.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Okay. So anyway, you know, I wanted to be proactive on that. And, you know, I'm following in the footsteps of Davy. I actually saw the sign last year around Davy. They had a few in horse country where they're at. And I thought it was a great idea. And Andy and Russell came up with the bright yellow. You know, you can't miss it. When, you know, it's loud, it's very informative. And it's just a reminder. So I just wanted to do that. One of the residents was mentioning 198 with lighting and dark skies and potholes in it. I just wanted to respond to that. And Bob, you live on that street, so correct me if I'm wrong anywhere. That's a private road. And the residents have to repair the road themselves. And I believe Ms. Komeni, if I've got the name right. And I apologize if I got the name wrong. But the lighting, the dark skies, any resident can put out nightlights. They just need to be a certain illumination. And that's available within our code, if you read it. Streetlights were pretty much adamantly opposed to in the neighborhoods. That's why we wrote the dark sky ordinance. And, but the street repairs, that's within the purview of the homeowners. You guys own the street, so I don't know if they're aware of that. And Bobby, you may want. And if I took any thunder away from you, Bob, I'm sorry. But I just wanted to make sure that got answered. Another thing possibly want to talk about, and this is just briefly, is the COVID-19 vaccines are coming out. And there's a real distribution sequence that's going on with the hospitals. And I'm wondering, and this is just strictly discussion on my part right now. Should we do a resolution to the state of Florida to make sure our first responders in the town of Davy and town of Southwest Ranches get inoculated first? The police, the firemen, what have you. I was just reading it on the internet, that the city of Jacksonville did that and a few other municipalities in Miami-Dade County. Everybody's writing letters like, you know, we need to protect our first responders, our schoolteachers, you know, all the people that are high profile and coming into high susceptibility or chances of getting. So it's out there for discussion. If somebody wants to pick the ball up in their comments, I'm okay with it, you know. So I just want to mention that. And I have a bunch of notes on the advisory boards, and I'll wait till after council member comments to start into that when we actually get into the meat and potatoes of the meeting. And we're also going to be talking about the license plate reader program later on in the meeting. And I have a lot of comments on that. I have pages, absolute pages of stuff that transpired. So, yeah, I see he's staring at us, Gary. You're staring at us. Yeah, he knows I've written three sentences. He knows me very well. And so, you know, and everybody, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah. Be safe, you know, it's dangerous out there. Watch yourself shopping, all that. So, and I'll wrap it up with that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Who would like to go next?
All right. You know what? I'll go ahead and take it from here. First issue, I guess, is the issue that Chris had spoken about. The 146th Avenue U-turn, which goes into 148th. The way my understanding is that when Sheridan was built, and the original Sheridan was then named Old Sheridan, which is within Sunshine Ranches. The residents in the HOA of Sunshine Ranches HOA at the time were very much opposed to the new Sheridan cutting through into Sunshine Ranches just because of the whole traffic issue, traffic. It would have, it does not even say how bad traffic would have been if that access had been allowed. So I read plenty of those emails that were shared with me from Sunshine Ranches HOA. And I was attending, I did attend that meeting last night and saw the witness of vote. And I would, I think it'd be something that maybe the town should draft up a resolution opposing that. And I think that would be looking out for the interests of the people that live in the Sunshine Ranches area and along Volunteer Road, especially because those will be the most heavily impacted residents if that, if that northbound lane is changed into, off of Sheridan onto Volunteer. So that'd be something that I would probably ask for a motion on.
Mayor. You could do that. I mean, you can do it right now.
Okay. Then I'd like to make, I'll make the motion then. I'll make the motion that the town drafts a resolution that would oppose the changing of the intersection at 148th to create a northbound lane into Sunshine Ranches, Davy, the Volunteer Road.
I'll second that. But you do realize you're asking for a motion, for a resolution to come back, and it won't come back until mid-January. Whereas if you make the resolution and pass it now and go through however you want to word it.
Good point.
All right. You know, that's a good point. Thank you. And I would like to make that as a resolution at this moment, that the town go on record opposing a northbound lane onto Volunteer Road.
I'll second it.
Great. Thanks for bringing that forth, David. Is there any further discussion on that from the council?
Mr. Mayor, we heard the president of the Homeland Association speak. They talked to a lot of the residents in the area. And the residents in the area are adamantly against it. I think we should grant the wishes of the residents there in that particular area.
Great. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment, too. I mean, for all of the times we're trying to end cut-through traffic in our town, allowing this would just promote a new cut-through road. I totally support the residents over in Sunshine Ranches and David as well.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I'll just add that I also completely support this. It was great to see at the Sunshine Ranches meeting last night that they were able to get a quorum, take a vote, and officially put it on the record that they opposed this. And, you know, for all the reasons that have been spoken, we don't need more traffic in our town. So that was a good vote. I certainly support this. I do want to open it up to the public for any comment that they might have, if there's anyone out in the public that would like to make a comment on this resolution before we vote on it. Please make that known.
We have one speaker, Mayor. It looks like, I believe it might be Dee Schroeder.
Okay, great.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you guys had a meeting for Sunshine Ranches about it, and you said that there's been multiple letters sent out. So is it not to allow that left-hand turn onto Volunteer Office Sheridan? Did they do a study? Did they put something out for all the residents in Sunshine Ranches, especially the ones closest? And how many emails or how many letters have gone out? I mean, to get more input on that. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. You know, I go down like everybody else, make the U-turn and come back. But I just think it's, if all the residents aren't informed of it, then you're not getting a true sense of who would like it and who would not like it.
Okay. Thank you, Dee.
Okay, Mayor, we have another speaker, Christina Brownlow. Ms. Brownlow?
Hi, gentlemen.
Hi, Chris.
Hi. Just so Dee knows, we put out a communication through our Sunshine Ranches HOA email. And we also put it out in our other communications. So it went out to many, many folks for input. And we had it out for at least, I want to say, a week and a half. And we've had at least 40, excuse me, at least 40 responses which are archived. So we were told we needed to have a quick turnaround and get information back within two weeks. So that was what we did in the meantime. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brownlow. The next speaker is, I believe, Noel Hollingsworth. Mr. Hollingsworth, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. This is a point of order. I believe that a resolution has to be advertised by the town. But a motion, strict motion, does not have to be advertised, but it would accomplish the same thing. I'll leave it to Keith to rule. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any other speakers, Russell?
We have one last speaker, phone number, I don't recognize, 305.
That's Dee. She spoke on the topic already.
Okay.
I think she may still have her hand up, that's all.
Keith, can you speak to?
There were a lot of issues here, but I was going to let Andy first jump in to find out whether or not a motion's even necessary. The way I understand it, a lot of this is the town right-of-way. Therefore, the town in its own volition, through support from Davy, can just simply say no. Volunteer, I don't think Andy is owned by the county. I'm pretty sure it's split between the town and Davy.
The issue, actually, Keith, the right-of-way, which is the eastbound Sheridan, to turn and go north onto Volunteer is timber fines.
But they would have, the way that I looked at the plan, Andy, and just correct me if I'm wrong, because you studied it much more than me, would require improvements made to Volunteer. Looked like they were changing lanes on Volunteer.
They were going to a left turn from southbound Volunteer. There'd be a right turn to go right on Sheridan, to go west, a straight to go across, and a left to go east. Those improvements aren't the problem. It's the left turn lane to come in from Sheridan. That's the, what's opposed by the residents.
So Andy, based on your research, who would have to approve this?
I believe Broward County. And we're in touch with, we're working on getting in touch with Broward County. Haven't gotten a response back from them yet. But it's under Richard Tornese's direction. And so we've reached out to Richard and we're working through him. So unfortunately, I don't have an answer back from him. I was hoping to have that for tonight's meeting. I don't have that at this time. But obviously, the council consensus is to look for a resolution opposing that left turn lane. I don't think that that would be problematic for us to move forward.
Well, a couple of things in response, you know, that I didn't want to fully get into. The town council passed an ordinance some time ago that restricts your ability to immediately approve resolutions on the spot. And that was done because a lot of times, council members during council member comments wanted to make motions that residents had no knowledge of ahead of time and couldn't debate, couldn't comment on. And as a result, the then-council felt it was the best interest of the council not to allow items to be debated on the spur of the moment without notice. Okay? Clearly, sometimes. Um clearly, sometimes you have to go around that regulations in cases of an emergency or when there is not a gap period between your meetings, even though that, that ordinance doesn't state that, that is just the reality. So what we can do in this instance uh to basically split the baby and make everyone happy based upon the, the ordinance and effect of the town, is to pass a, a motion at this point um not asking for a resolution to come back, but passing a motion in opposition to the uh uh the turn lane being installed the way that it's being proposed uh to give direction to Andy to go to Briar County and to let them know we're in opposition. And then at that point, if Briar County says, give us your uh resolution, obviously this isn't gonna be doing, done overnight, but give us your resolution, then we'll put it on the January agenda. Uh so right now, a, a, what would be appropriate would be just a motion to direct Andy uh to state the council's opposition to this turn lane. Uh that will give him the direction, the authority to oppose it, and then uh we'll in January bring back a resolution if necessary.
Great, thank you, Keith. I think, uh, I think the only thing I would add to that is I think we should just plan on doing both. I think we should do the motion today and plan on doing the resolution um next meeting. And, and just put it on the agenda and move forward with that. If, if for some reason or other it's not required, we can always take it off. But um I would say, let's just put it on there. I think it's gonna be required. It's gonna be helpful.
And I'll call Mayor Geller in the interim to let him know our stance on this one.
Perfect.
Uh Mr. Mayor, um if it, if it's possible, I would like to amend my motion um subject to um Councilmember Jablonski's second um to um reflect what um Attorney Keith Poliakoff had um discussed in his comments.
Uh I modify my second to agree with Dave.
Okay, great. So um, so just. Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
May, may, I'm sorry, I didn't, I was, I didn't mean to interrupt the way I did. Um the question, I guess, is Randy and Keith, is, is there any chance that Volunteers State Road? Does that have a bearing on it?
It would have a bearing, but I, I have never seen that on the state roadway map.
The only reason I say that is, is I got pulled over twice by state troopers on that road.
Unfortunately, state troopers are allowed to give tickets uh on, on any road.
Seventy-five.
Uh and in fact, uh state trooper, for whatever reason, I don't know if anyone has noticed, has been camping out on Griffin Road in the medium lately, and that is not the direction of the town. So it's just within their authority.
Okay, I, I, this has been over several years, so this isn't recent, but I just want to mention that, you know, I, I found it surprising. So I, it's a possibility it's a state road. That's all.
Great, thank you. All right, so um, so then we have a motion on the floor to oppose this. Um we have direction for a resolution at the next meeting. Um is there any further comment on this before we vote?
I, I uh just say I, I believe that uh the residents will be uh seriously adversely affected by a northbound lane of Sheridan.
Great, thank you. All right, Russell, let's uh take a vote on that.
Okay, Councilmember Albritton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Brian Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Um and uh, yeah, I uh there was uh during uh the campaigns, um uh Councilmember Albritton had um discussed a, uh maybe a traffic uh advisory board, something to that effect. And I, I, I believe that um it's something that we need to continue discussion of. Um I think that was a very, very, very good idea. So if there's any discussion uh we, how we can push forward with this uh through Councilmember Albritton's idea.
I'll, I'll chime, I'll, I'll chime in if you're looking for comments. I'm wondering if this is something a, and this is only discussion on my part, I'm not leaning on where the other. Um if, if an existing board, that should be added to their purview, like the Drainage and Infrastructure Board, which is in charge of roads, guardrails and, you know, drainage on roads and tis door and all that. I, I'm just throwing that out there because it's an existing board.
That'd be easier.
I, I don't know. I think it'd be more effective, to be honest with you, because they know the roads. Even, they've, most of, most of the people on the, on the committees have been dealing with it for years. So I don't know what you guys think about it. That's just my two cents. That's all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Jim.
Yeah, I, I've spoken to Andy about this and, and Gary, uh this is a board that uh my idea was that the residents from all four areas of the town would come together and see if they could come up with ideas on how to slow the traffic down, whether it be, and I know I'm throwing things out, speeding bumps or, or bumbles, whatever it would take, or more enforcement from the police department. I don't know the drainage board that well, uh although I, I, I've been in on, on a few of the meetings. But uh this would be just a board, um I don't know how much power they'd actually have, but they could come up with a lot of good recommendations from the citizens in the area as to, as to what they feel would be able to slow the traffic down in their area. Think one of the boards might be appropriate, you know, I, I'd really like to hear about it, but I think there is something needs to be done. I noticed the traffic tickets that were written last month. There were a lot of them on one hundred and thirty-second and, and a ton of them on Griffin Road. However, I will say that we're not on one sixty-six. All right? And I'm sorry to say that, but the people in Green Meadows and Dean's Ranches, uh you know, we're looking for a little help if we can get it. So uh if it's a board, if it's one of the drainage boards or if it's any of the other boards that may be able to pick it up. But uh to start a new board, I don't know what that would take, but I'd like to see some go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Bob?
Yeah, um I, uh Jim and I had talked about this a couple of times uh before the election and I really liked the idea. Um I would prefer this board to be separate from any of the others because uh you know, I, I look at this as not just speeding. Speeding is just one problem we have. I mean, i- if it's a public safety board, it's fire, it's police, it's, it's the whole gamut of public safety. And to me, that's probably a little too broad, at least my interpretation of it is a little too broad to uh strap on another one of the uh, the boards. To me, if, to, to, to uh Jim's point, if we got people from around, well, we have people from around town on the other boards. But uh I, I, I like the idea of, of bringing a, a new board uh together to do this. Drainage board is pretty busy.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, go ahead, Andy.
Sorry, if I can jump in. Yeah, Councilmember Albritton and I have had some discussions on this and what I, what I, I'd like to propose is, because uh tonight we're, we're looking at the existing boards, what I'd like is the opportunity to continue to work on fleshing that out with him and then, and then bring something back for, for your consideration.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I was gonna say um that I, I, you know, when you go through the campaign process, as I'm sure this is maybe where Jim um also was really hearing this, you hear about traffic a lot, not, not just occasionally, you hear about it a lot. So clearly, it is an issue that is top of mind around town. And so I don't think that um it's out of line to have a board for this topic. Um I do wonder whether um it makes sense. Well, it makes sense to have it a permanent board, but I'm wondering if it might be more appropriate to have the board be um in place for uh six months or so, you know, to kind of, as a project, more than an ongoing effort um to where they gather information around town, they do, you know, kind of an information gathering element. Then they look at different alternatives for different areas and then come back with um recommendations um for different areas around town. I'm not saying that's the way it has to be. I'm just saying that more of a um uh you know, task-oriented to come up with ideas for, for traffic issues that are around town. Maybe another way of looking at it rather than creating a permanent board um that would go on. Uh so just throw that out there as another, something else to think about um as an option.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh the idea, that, that's not a bad idea, six-month board. Would that be something we could actually uh establish a six-month board? Or would we establish a board and then sunset them at the end of six months?
Um Keith could probably clarify. I think we could do either one, just like we did the, the fire assessment board. It was created and it was created with a sunset date when it was created, actually. And so um we could do something similar here or uh, but I think we could also create it and then, and then sunset it later on. But I think, I think it's more effective if it has a set date, start and end date, because it just creates a little urgency to get something done in this particular period of time. And I don't know if six months is the right amount, maybe nine months, but I think it would be, um I think it would be, actually help them to be more effective.
Anything would be better than nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Anything would be better than nothing, yes.
So anyway, I, I guess what I'm hearing and it makes sense to me is we'll leave it to you and Andy uh to, to talk about it. Go talk about the different ideas and, and maybe in January come back with a recommendation.
Yes, sir.
That concludes my comments.
Thanks, David. Sorry that we all walked over your comments.
That's okay, that's fine.
All right. Okay, um, yeah.
So uh um I want to let everybody know that Anna Coldice, Andy and I met at Town Hall on, I believe it was uh November the twenty-fourth. Uh we had a very productive meeting. Um we, we, we brought Anna in, as I, I think I mentioned, she is uh certified in facilitating this type of activity and as well, she's got deep, deep, deep experience in um facilitating these types of executive strategy meetings. She did it for a very long time for one of the companies she worked for. Um it looks like, and Andy, I haven't seen a confirmation, but it looks like we're scheduled for one-nine to host the retreat.
Yeah, that, that is correct.
Okay.
We are and there'll be more information forthcoming to all of you very shortly.
Right, right. Uh I'll kind of give you guys updates since we can't talk about this. As, as uh Anna, Andy and I worked through this with, with uh Andy and Marty's teams. So I'll, you know, I'll, I'll bring up whatever's going on. I'm sure Andy will be communicating with you guys anyway, one-on-one. All right, so there's a little bit of a homework and reading to do on this. Uh if you read Andy's email, we, there's a book she recommended, very short book, and then um she recommends we takes my, we take the Myers-Briggs test, if you've ever taken that. It basically talks about your communication styles and, and uh it, it, it teaches you, shows you how you can better communicate with other people once you understand their communications uh styles. So we'll go through all that. Um moving on, uh let's see. I support your idea, Gary, on supporting our first responders, whatever that takes. I mean, if it's a meeting with the governor, let's set it up now. I don't care. I want our firemen, I want our EMTs, I want all of our public safety people to uh to be out there and be safe. Um let's see, we voted, I, I wrote some notes while we were here. Um so Andy, back in, I believe it was October, the second meeting in October, we talked about trash um and, and the performance of the vendor. And I know you were going to start uh working with your team to put some processes in place. Uh do you have any uh estimate or idea when you'll be able to uh provide us the reports that you were talking about in terms of their performance?
Yeah, actually, uh Vice Mayor, I just had a conversation with Rob Lay, uh Rob Lay about that, who's handling that contract now. And we're working on a presentation for you for the next council meeting.
Excellent. So the January meeting, fantastic. All right, um. Next item, uh the Hindu temple that is just to the east of Town Hall on Griffin Road on Saturday is hosting a uh Farm Share Public Service Event. It's on Saturday, the twelfth, from ten AM to one PM. And folks, uh residents, please pass this around to your neighbors. Um they're giving out food. This is one of those uh, you know, food uh drives where they're, they're giving out, they're gonna have food for about five hundred families. So if you know anybody who's unemployed or, or who could use the help right now, given COVID, please let them know. The town has uh put the flyer up on the website. I'll probably post it uh tomorrow over on Facebook, so uh I really commend them on, on what they're doing. It's, it's a phenomenal, it's a fantastic thing. My last item, and David, uh since you uh stole Jim's thunder, I'm gonna steal a little bit of your thunder. Um uh David K, David has voiced an idea that I think is a good one. I've actually talked with Andy about this a few weeks ago and that's really moving up uh how soon we get our book, you know, the agenda from, from the administration. Some of these, like thi- this one, it was no big deal because uh, you know, this, this agenda is relatively light, uh light reading. But you know, when we looked at the um, the facility out on uh the old CCA property, uh that, that was heavy reading. Um you know, and, and a contract like that one, you really want to read it two or three times to fully understand it. And to try to get that and all the other items that were on the uh agenda for that particular meeting read in time for the meeting and be up to date and be able to ask Andy questions and Keith if necessary, et cetera. It's tough. And it, it's been tough on the council whenever we have a meeting like that. You know, we get it on Friday. It then, we, we read it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Uh Wednesday and here we are. I, I don't think a week is really enough for, for some of these books. I'd, I'd really um like to uh request that we move it to two weeks. But of course, it's a huge ask doubling the time, so I'm asking, but I'd, I'd like to hear from uh Andy and uh Keith and uh really the senior managers that are on the call here right now. Unless, Andy, you want to represent the whole team, it's your call, um whether this is doable or not.
I, 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 I had conversations with Councilmember Kaczynski before the election on this. You and I have spoken about it. And, and there's really, generally speaking, I don't think the items are an issue. There, there's two areas where, where that's not true and, and where your concerns come into play. One is on a really detailed and involved contract like the P three. And I understand that, so we're gonna make every effort to get those kinds of items to you guys in advance. Uh give you more time to go over those. The other item where we've had the issue is quasi-judicial items and land use items. And probably the vast majority of those are, are fairly boring and fairly simple. However, some of them get the attention of the entire community. And so what we're trying to do is ascertain the items that get the attention of the community and need time for them to chew on it and provide feedback to you, we recognize that those items need more time. And so we're, we're working now, I've gotten input from Jeff Cadums, from Keith, from Russell, from, from others on, on, on how we're gonna do that. But we're gonna focus on those two areas. Those land use items that impact the public and the community so that we can get those out to you. How we're gonna do that, I'm not entirely certain yet, but we want to be able to roll those out quick, uh quicker and, and, and leave that extra time for you all to solicit feedback and give you time to go through the more detailed contracts. So we're, we are working on both of those for you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up the piece about uh, y- you know, informing the community. Uh y- you know how it works. We, we read it on the weekend and then we have two or three days, four days to, to get everybody involved. And you're right, that's not enough time for, for adequate community involvement, so. Good, thank you.
That's where we're going, so thank you.
Good. Great idea, David. You get all the crap.
Thank you, Bob.
That's all I have. Happy holidays, everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. What do you have to be to celebrate? Have a great time.
Thank you.
Yes, George, I'm the caboose.
There you go. I'll be the caboose, but you're right, right before the caboose.
Right before the caboose. Uh the potholes in Green Meadows. I was given that task by one of our other council members who had that task before of driving through and looking around. Uh he took it on his own to do that. He then turned that over to me, so I will be making a report on the potholes and.
on the potholes in the District Three area. We were around today, driving around, looking at some of them, and there are quite a few on a number of the streets that are here. 164th, I think, has about 41 potholes on 164th alone. And so, yeah, so that will be one of the concerns I'll be turning in. And I also wanted to bring up, I spoke last night and I've had the opportunity to speak to both Sunshine Ranches and Country Estate Homeowners Association. I'd like to start or reconvene a civic association here in Green Meadows. Not necessarily a homeowners association, more of the civic association that they have in Rolling Oaks. It's a fun group. There's no real restrictions. It's just a group to get together, have fun, talk about the area that we live in, share ideas of what's going on in the area. And so I might be calling on some of the other homeowners association, Country Estates, Rolling Oaks and Sunshine Ranches there for help with that. I was told last night from one of our residents that if I needed help with legal work, that they'd be more than happy to help me draw up some of the papers. But I am reaching out to the community and you'll see that in my report, I mean, my article in the paper coming out that anybody in Green Meadows and Deans Ranches, District Three area that were interested, give me a call. So I'm going to be reaching out and see if we can't start one. I really enjoy attending the homeowners association meetings that I've been attending Sunshine Ranches, Rolling Oaks and Country Estate. And I'd like to see Deans Ranches and Green Meadows doing. Thank you.
Great, great. Thank you, Jim. Yeah, I think that would be awesome to be able to start the civic association out there. I think it makes a huge difference in the involvement of the community in the town and the communication of what's going on. There's all kinds of things and also a lot of fun. So that's, that's always good too.
And happy holidays, everybody. I forgot.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All right. So I just want to echo some things that we've already said, definitely from vaccine standpoint, I agree 100% we, anything we can do to get our first responders to obtain that vaccine upfront. I think that's the right thing to do. And they put their, their health on the line every time they go out and make a call. So it's important that they are protected. So definitely support that. I do have a number of comments about the boards, but I feel pretty strongly that I just need to respond with what former mayor Doug McKay said and council member Schroder said. I, I just think that they, they hit the nail on the head and I agree with them 100%. And I know it, you know, it was many years ago, it was back in 2004. But there was a mayor's race and I wasn't running, but I was supporting Freddie Fisickelli. And he did not win and I was immediately jettisoned from all the boards right after that election. So I understand that that happens. I didn't think it was right at the time then, and I don't think it's right now. And so we'll be going into the boards and hopefully we can rectify that. So. I do think we're on the right track with the agenda book, getting that on those special issues, getting that upfront. Great idea. Thank you, David. Great idea. I think that's, it's, and it's not only important for us, but it's critical for the residents of our town. To be able to have that extra time to understand what's going on so they can formulate the right questions and frankly, help us determine the right answer. So, great idea. Just to reinforce with the upcoming holidays and the celebrations, you know, certainly enjoy. Have a great time. But I would just a couple of things first, as Gary put out there, great idea, once again. The signs to put out there, but let's just, let's just be careful of our, you know, those areas where we have animals, livestock, horses, equestrian. It's just, it's a very, it's a very traumatic time for those animals and, and anything we can do to alleviate that is greatly appreciated. And so the other thing is we have had a string of parties here recently that have exceeded our noise ordinance where they've been very large parties, not even going to get into the COVID side of it, which is another issue, which is not good, but not getting the proper permits, not shutting down in time, not just creating issues. And frankly, I'll just put it this way, showing a lack of respect for the neighbors there. And, you know, we're one community, we're one town and we need to have respect for one another. And so I would just encourage everyone that if you're going to have a party like that, get the permit. It's, it's very cheap. But what it does is it lets your neighbors know that that's going to be going on. It informs you about when the times that you can, you can be loud and the times when you have to quiet it down. Not necessarily shut it off, but quiet it down. And that's important out of respect and appreciation for your neighbors. So. We are working, a couple of things we're working on, we are working on the upcoming drainage meeting that we had talked about, getting the different drainage districts together, looking at things that we can be proactive about in preparing for the next storm. It's not a question of if we're going to get another large storm, it's just a question of when it's going to come. So anything we can do to be proactive and to do a better job next time than we did this past time, not that we did a bad job, but we can always do better. And so that's coming together and I appreciate Andy and the staff's work on that. And with that, also want to wish everybody a happy Hanukkah, very Merry Christmas, whatever you celebrate, enjoy. This is a special time. Enjoy it with your friends, your family as best you can and wish everybody the best. Thank you.
Steve, can I jump in?
Yeah, sure.
Would we be better off with the authorizing Andy to write a letter to the governor requesting the first responders in our area? I'm willing to make a motion on that if I can get a second. You know, that, that's an immediate.
Yeah, I think if, I think if we just have a consensus, I'm not sure we need a motion or vote on it, but I think if we have a consensus that that's what we want to do, we can, we can direct Andy to do that. I certainly would support that.
Absolutely.
All right. So Andy, if you could, if you could write a letter to the governor requesting, you know, that the first responders be included with our, the first round of the COVID-19 vaccinations.
Good idea.
Yep. Great. Thanks.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Okay, Keith, legal comments.
Sir, Mayor, I would like to wish the council staff and everyone in the town a happy and healthy holiday. Looks like we're close to the end and I can only hope for a better 2021 for everyone in this town. Other than that, no further comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Andy?
I'll be almost as brief as Keith. Just one thing I want to point out, the CARES Act small business relief. The deadline which had passed has been extended by the county because they have technical difficulties on their website. So if you have a small business and you're looking for CARES Act assistance, you can go to broward.org/cares until I believe it's 11:59 PM on December 14th. So we're close to the deadline, but if there's a small business out there who thinks they might have missed it, they've got a few more days that they can go ahead and, and get that, get that application in. Other than that, I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday, a safe holiday. We've got a vaccine, as we've talked about out there on the horizon. So hopefully the next few months, the world will start to look a little bit different and, and maybe next year, the holiday time will be like we all remember. Here's to that, sir. So stay safe in the meantime.
Great. Thank you, Andy. All right. So resolutions. Russell, if you can read the first resolution, item number eight.
Certainly, Mayor. This is the resolution of the Town Council of the Towns Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board. Restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members and providing an effective date.
Okay, so for the, the boards. So this is a little, little different than normal type of resolution because we all, we all kind of come together on this with, you know, our own, our own part. And then, so I think, Andy, you have a listing of what we had anticipated, at least our individual recommendations to be, right?
Right. And I can read, yeah, if you want me to read those back, Mayor, it'd be.
Yeah, let's start there. Let's start with that.
Okay. So this is the five individual appointments with the most recent change. So the mayor's appointment will be Noel Hollingsworth. The vice mayor's appointment will be Jason Hallberg. Councilmember Allbritton will appoint Joseph Altshuler. Councilmember David Kozinski is appointing Lori Parrish. And Councilmember Gary Jablonsky is appointing George Morris.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So that is the kind of where we start. Are there any adjustments to that from what Andy read?
Not on those five.
Okay.
Not, or not from my, my.
Yeah, that's what I just meant, just as far as those, those.
But I do, I do have some comments to make before we get really going on.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. The, the five that are in there, you know, that, that's fine. There's 14 people that want to be on that board, maybe 15. And I'm wondering if we need to look at the whole process on how we do this. First off, I would, I would love to see, you know, based on what I'm hearing, you know, Doug and possibly Dee, the former mayor appointed to that board at large. But I only want to do it if all five of us vote yes on it. If one of us is a no vote, I don't want to do it. Okay, I don't, I don't want all this baggage and this problem. So I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I really think that's important, that we show unity on this. If not, you know, take it off the table. But one of the things that we have going on is we have a real problem with the boards in terms of getting quorums. Now, there's a lot of people that have volunteered for this, but they, most of them have never attended a meeting. You know, this is something new to them. So they don't, they don't, uh, don't have a full grasp of the process. And I was wondering if we want to make some sort of a rule where we have our, our five picks for each, each part. And then if somebody were to come in for six consecutive months of meetings, would be then appointed at large. On something like that. In other words, they show commitment that they want to come. Because we have not been able to have any of our meetings for, since COVID and actually before that. It was, it was a real, it was a real chance that you probably weren't going to have a meeting. I don't know how many times I drove to Town Hall and just drove back after 15 minutes because nobody showed up. You know, there were three people, two people, it wasn't enough to make a quorum. So if we put, if we had all 15 people who want to be on the comp board, which I, you know, the more, I'm, I'm the guy that's the more the merrier. So everybody understands that. You would need eight people to show up to have a quorum, you know. I can't even, we can't even get four people to show up on a park board right now. We haven't, the park board hasn't met since February, I think, March. You know, that, that, that sort of thing. So I'm wondering if we keep the at-large, I mean, if we keep the, the board appointments to the five, that gives us a quorum of three, which we'd probably be able to get. And then anybody who wants to attend an advisory board could do so. And I'm throwing out an idea here. You know, I'm doing two things here. One, I would like to hear about putting Doug and Dee on the board or possibly just Doug, it all depends on how everybody feels. But I would only, I only want to do that if all five of us agree on it. And possibly a policy moving forward where people come on and they show commitment that they want to be on the board, that they're there, they attended, they learn about the board, they learn what's going on. And then they can be, we can motion them in as an at-large member. So, and I wanted to have, and it applies to all the boards. So I, I'd like to hear everybody's thoughts on that before we get into the motion phase.
Yep. Good, good, good. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Gary, I got a question. You're talking about the larger the board, the larger the quorum needs to be. And you have a problem now when we have seven members sometimes. If you had 15 members, wouldn't that be a much larger problem? I, I know you say that there's some people that attend meetings and come in and listen, but when they're assigned to a board, that's a whole different thing. Then they're, they've, they've made a commitment. When they come in on their own, that's different. But when you're actually assigned to a board, it, it becomes different. So I'm just wondering if, if you have too large of a board, if it might not be a problem. I'm not sure. I mean, I'm new to that.
You're actually making my point for me. That, that, that I'm trying to say is we have 15, we have 14, 15 people, like for this one board, let's just take the first one. Comp plan board. We have 14, 15 people. That would put us at a quorum of eight, which I, you know, we can barely get three right now, you know, on, on all of this. And so what I'm saying is let's take the five and if we appoint Doug as a, a member at large. And then anybody who wants to come, who the other seven people or I'm not sorry, the other 10 people who want to come to the board and they show commitment over the next six months of, 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 you know, attending the board and learning all about it, that we make them a, a, a voting member at large. I'm just thinking of a way to, you know, because everybody, you know, we're having a real hard time with the quorums, having a meeting. You know, and, and those of you that have come to it have seen it, where basically the meeting, you know, drags on, we talk about the Dolphins or this or that, or, you know, something going on in our lives. And then everybody goes home, you know, or more right now, zooming. But, but even before the Zoom, even before COVID, we were having a, a lot of problems with certain boards on everybody showing up. So.
Well, Gary, we have a, yeah, Gary, I'm sorry, we, we have a member now that has, that is sitting on the board until it is sunshine here. And that member would like to stay on the board, although there was another appointment made in his name, but he's got experience on the board. And, you know, and I'm sure he'd like to stay. And then there's another one that would be considered, I thought the seven man board was a pretty good sized board, that they still need four people to show up for the meetings. I don't know if 15 people on a board and you need eight. I, I don't know if that wouldn't be a much bigger problem. But the at-large members, if you put the board back to seven for the comprehensive planning board, you have a member that's there now that would like to be reappointed. And then I have another suggestion of Anna Colbs, the one that Bob recently spoke about, Anna Colbs. With her knowledge, she's got an extensive background, a new person, a new face, a new idea to the board, just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in disagreement with the number. If you guys want to make it seven instead of five, or we do two at large, I don't have a problem at all with that. I mean, hey, if it was up to me, I'd like to have all 15 of them on, on the board. But, you know, getting them all to show up is a whole other story. Everybody signs up, but do they actually show up?
Right.
You know, I mean, 99% of success is actually showing up. And, and it's very frustrating when you're just going to meeting to meeting to meeting, you're, you're, you're marking out your day and you can't hold a meeting, you can't talk about things, you can't, nothing gets done.
Yeah. I, I agree with you, Gary, but I think there's two sides to that coin. And I think sometimes we've been too nice on the boards and it does not serve the boards well. The other side of that exact same coin is that we already have rules set up that if, if you have three unexcused absences, then you should be removed from the board. Now, if, if the council wants to put you right back on again, that's, that's their prerogative. But I think that, you know, if you, and by unexcused, it just means that, you know, you, you can miss more than three, but you, you call ahead of time. You let them know that you can't make it. And then, then that's an excused absence. It doesn't, doesn't run against you. But if you have three unexcused where as far as we know, the board member is going to show up and then they just don't. And so everybody else shows up and kind of waste their time because they can't get a quorum and then they all have to go home. If you have three of those in the year, then, then you should be removed. In most cases, because, you know, you know, we've, we've, and those, we want to be nice and, and it's not counted against the individual, but I, I think that almost should be mandatory. Because then that creates room, as you're saying, for others that do show up, that do want to be a part of it, to have a spot to get on the board. And so I, I agree with what you're saying. Regardless, even if there isn't a spot there, some, if an individual shows up for, you know, I don't know, four, five meetings, six meetings. I don't know, four or five meetings, six meetings, um, in a year, yeah, let's put them on. They're committed. They're, they're, they are showing up. Um, and so I agree with that a hundred percent, but I think it should work the other way, too.
Unfortunately, um, I lost the internet connection, so the whole last two minutes from what you said, I have no clue.
Okay, well, basically what I said was that, oh, yeah, okay, basically what I said was that the, um, the other side of that coin is the unexcused absences.
And, okay, now, now the rest of what you said makes sense.
Yeah, I think we're just, we're, we're not doing ourselves any favors by being nice and not counting those, you know. I think everybody, even if you can't make it, you, you can call, or you can send a text to let the board know that you can't make it. Um, and, and I don't think that's asking too much. But if you don't do that for three times in a year, then, then I think you should be removed, and, and the council could always put you right back on if, if there's extenuating circumstances.
So where does that leave us?
Well, I, I, you know, I mean, there's other council members haven't weighed in. I, I agree a hundred percent with what you're saying. Only I would add to it that we need to be stricter on the unexcused. Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up, Steve. Is it three or is it two? I thought it was two.
I think it's three. Russell, do you know off the top of your head?
Yes, yes, Mayor, it is three.
Okay, good. Yeah, I mean, that's, we, we've never done that. We have, uh, I won't name any names, but we know one of our people didn't show up this whole year. So is that somebody that should continue to sit on boards? Probably not, in my view, but I think we should implement this rule and, and stand by it, because I see fifteen people there. I see a bunch of people that have, they're smart people, they have great ideas. I'd put all fifteen on. And if people start not showing up, then we start trimming down the size of the board for those people that don't show up.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I know this is totally out of character, but, uh, I've had a lot of experience with advisory boards. One of the things that, just a consideration is to potentially take away the, uh, the excused absence from the entire policy, and just record an absence. You still, because then you take the, you take the, that feeling of discretion, or that feeling that the, the board chair or, or someone has to make a motion to excuse somebody, they don't want to remove them from the board. Ultimately, the council gets the ultimate decision as to whether they're going to put somebody back on the board who might have been removed automatically from the policy. So by taking that away from the actual advisory board members, and the, um, and you just take it from the policy itself, ultimately it rests back on the council. So if they have three absences, period, they get removed. And then you can always put them back if there's some extenuating circumstance.
Um, yeah, I see some merit to that. I guess as a, as a council member, I would like to know whether they made the effort to inform the board that they would not be able to show up, not be able to make that meeting, or whether they just didn't show up. To me, that's, that's a very important distinction to know.
Yeah, I agree. That's, that is important. If somebody makes the effort, hey, I can't make it in today, uh, you know, we're talking an email or a phone call. I mean, how hard is that? I mean, granted, we're all busy, but guess what? We all have jobs. We all, you know, we're all busy.
Yeah, I, I would, I would prefer to actually, I don't know if this is, this is possible, but I would prefer to get rid of the vote altogether and make it more of an administrative function that, um, you know, if, if someone, um, nor- normally the council liaison will, not the council liaison, the staff liaison will, you know, notify all of, all the members of the board that we're having a meeting coming up in the next couple of days. And for them to just log those individuals that, you know, that did not uh, show up, but they did send an email or a text and log that as an excused absence. And those that we did not hear from at all, and did not show up as an unexcused absence, and not even make it into a vote.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I like that idea in that wife and I travel. So I might be on vacation, and I don't want to get punished for being on vacation. So, you know, I would notify the board naturally. And Russell, I respect your idea, but for me to take a vacation and it be an, an unexcused absence because I was on vacation, I don't know if that would be, I, I understand your view, but, you know, to punish somebody for taking a vacation, I think would be wrong.
Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I like Russell's idea because excused or not excused, if, if enough people don't show up, you don't have a quorum, you don't have a meeting, you've wasted time effectively. So whether they, I think everybody should call in. I mean, I do that when, uh, I can't make meetings. And, you know, that's, that, that, that's good, uh, that's just good business. Um, but it affects the team if, even if they do call in and let everybody know that, uh, they can't make it. If four people call in, no meeting.
Well, that's, I see that, and that, I think is the big difference. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, it's, it, it's a big difference, there's no doubt about it, but it still affects the quorum, and you still can't meet if enough people don't show up, even if they call in. I agree with you, Steve, it's the right thing to do, but I don't think it helps anything.
Well, I think that what it helps is it, it stops, you know, you don't drive to town hall for the meeting and then find out that we don't have a quorum and then drive back home. You know, it's canceled the day or two ahead of time, and yeah, but you're right, at the end of the day, you, you, you miss a month's worth of work.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's very frustrating. You know, Steve, you've been there, we've, we've sat there and talked about everything under the sun, except what we, what we need to be talking about while we're meeting, you know.
Right.
We go back and forth. You know, currently we have what, uh, minimum of five to seven per board. I mean, some boards have nine. Or the Parks Board, I think, has eight or nine. The Education Advisory has like, uh, eight, I think, or nine also. So I mean, you know, it, some of these boards, they've, they've really got their act together, and they're a very cohesive team. Uh, some of them are, you know, intermiss, um, you know, and I, we need to, we need to rectify that somehow. This is the time to do it, I guess what I'm trying to say. Yeah, the time for us to air all this out, you know, go back, go back and forth. So, um, I, I, I don't have a problem with putting at-large people on, you know, I, I'm just looking at the core of, you, you know, of, of five. I don't have, I, you know, I can go either way, as long as we get some sort of kind of commitment out of people.
I, I do have a hesitation on the comp board and the drainage board going above seven. I'm okay with seven. Um, but it's just, it's, both of those are, are pretty technical.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and, and.
You, you want people with a knowledge base that have, yeah, and I have, have, are willing to read reams of documents and who have already read them, and have already gone through the process, and, you know, have institutional knowledge of what, you know, where our roads are, where our flooding is, you know, and that's not saying, uh, somebody new can't jump in there. I'm not even suggesting that. I'm just saying it's an asset, you know, and, and, you know, we talk about all our volunteers and how we need to be using them throughout the town and all that. And here's a perfect example of it, where we've got volunteers that have like spent years and months, uh, you know, learning the comprehensive plan, learning drainage, learning this, learning that, and they may be denied a seat on the, on the table, you know. Or for different reasons. And right now, I'm talking about Doug, you know, I mean, and, uh, you know, so it, it, it's, it's a little frustrating.
Yep.
Putting it mildly. So I, I don't know where you want to, what direction you want to move in.
Yeah, David, yeah, I just want to, I don't, David, do you have any thoughts on that, which you'd prefer?
The, the, the technical aspect that you had mentioned, um, with the drainage board and the comp board, um, that, I, I, I kind of believe that the seven members is, um, you, you gotta have, you're, you're going into a lot of debate. You don't want to beleaguer the, the meetings because you've got, um, fourteen people that are talking during the meeting, and you end up going afar later into beyond ten o'clock on some of those kind of a meeting. Um, now, I, uh, it is my understanding that, um, one or two members of the comp board missed maybe half of the meetings. And I think whether excused or unexcused, that length of absence is a detriment to the whole board. But e- e- excuse or unexcuse, you miss half of the meetings, that's six months of work that the person's not even participating in. Um, and I think that, like I said, that's a detriment to the board. So, in summary, basically, I believe that the seven members, uh, I, I would agree to that being the cap on those two boards, but maybe we do something with the, um, absences, because like I said, the, the, missing half of the meetings of the year, that's not even a commitment.
Right, right.
Let me, let me ask you a question, David, because we're in discussion right now, so, um, do, do you have a problem with, uh, Doug McKay being on the, one of the at-large on the comp plan?
If Doug McKay is, if Doug McKay is willing to, uh, attend all the meetings, then, um, I, I, I would not vote no.
Okay, that means a yes?
It means yes.
I, I love your attorneys.
Hey, Steve, uh, there's something else here that we need to be really careful of. This is the most number of volunteers we've ever had, which it's a great problem to have, right? But, you know, we're, we're pushing out the message, we want volunteers, we want new people, we want, I mean, I think we want new blood, new ideas continuously. I, 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 I don't want to, you know, like, make people think that to be on the comp plan board or the, the drainage board, you've got to have all this technical knowledge. I mean, I didn't have it when I joined it, either one of them. It took me a year or two to learn, but I learned. Um, Noel taught me a lot, you taught me a lot. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about, you know, sending the wrong message to all these people that want to help out, that, you know, sorry, we, you know, we're going to limit it to the people that either we know, or, you know, that we're saying that before.
Yeah.
Well, that's what it looks like right here. If you look at the piece of paper I'm looking at, you know, the, the list of all the names. I think we need blood, new blood.
I, I agree. All right, so let's, so we've talked about a lot of things. Let's talk about, let's, um, get a consensus on them one by one. Um, I basically heard three, three different thoughts on three different areas. Uh, I think the first one that came up, Gary brought up was the addition of, um, new members, uh, based on their attendance, even if they are not part of the original group that is, um, proposed by the, uh, by the council. So I don't know. Gary, do you want to kind of spell that out with, how you would like to see that go, so then we can, we can.
Absolutely, thank you for the opportunity. Um, what I'm saying is, if a, a resident wants to attend, uh, wants to join the board, they go to the meetings, they participate. Uh, the only thing they can't do is they can't vote and they can't make a motion, but they can participate. I mean, a perfect example was Mr. Hollingsworth during the comp board meetings. For two years, he was off the board, and you gave him free rein whenever he had a comment. And he's a, he's a, you know, he's a wealth of knowledge in that, and it, and it, and the board benefited from that, you know. Um, so I can just see that where it would, would go for everybody like that. Um, so I, I'm, I'm thinking that if somebody uh, resident comes to the various meetings and they go six months in a row, I mean, that's a commitment. Um, that we can, I, I, I have no problem motioning them in as an at-large member. I have no problem adding them, you know, on that. But, you know, you need to kind of like, you got to show up.
Yep.
You know, you know, that kind of thing. And, and you got to learn, you got to learn what the board's all about. That's my thought behind it, you know.
Yeah.
Before, before we get on it. And I'm not saying you have to like prequalify, I'm just saying we've got so many. You know, so how do we, how do we manage this? It's really where, where I'm going with it. And when, and obviously the people who have the commitment should get, should get on the board, I think.
I would support that. I would support that. My, my only, I, I support it. My, my only thing that kind of, um, makes me, um, think maybe it needs to be tweaked just a little bit, is the six months in a row, because to David's point, or I think it was Jim's point, actually, um, that, you know, you may go on vacation, so then does your six, six meetings start all over again, kind of a deal, and, you know, that, that's, that's probably.
It's a, it's a tough world out there.
It's a tough world.
No, you're right, but, but if it's, there's something that's excused, and somebody wanted to, let's say they're in month number five, and they're going out of town for whatever reason. You know, they can send a formal letter or an email to, you know, and, and say, hey, I'm going to be out of town, I want to attend, blah, 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 I've had there, been there four times, please, you know, and we, it's a gimme, you know, you know, or, and what do they call it in golf? I don't play golf, but I.
All right, so I, I would support that. Um, let's get, hear from maybe else. Yeah, Jim?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Gary, I got a question. Um, how large of a board would you end up with? I, I mean, you potentially could end up with thirty people if that was the rule, uh, uh, unless you set some type of a number at seven, ten, whatever you set that number at, you could end up with forty people over a year's period if everybody showed up and attended six months. Do you want a board that large?
Wow, man, that's a great problem to have, if we had that many people in our board.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's the intent. You show up for six months and you're on the board. I mean, the people show up at our meetings, at, at all these meetings, you know, when they feel like it, more or less. I think what we're laying out here is if, if these folks want to be on the board, they should come for some period of time before they'd be appointed. I think that's what we're hearing here.
Yeah, that's what I think. I mean, you, you know, I, you, you'll separate the wheat from the chaff, uh, real fast.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, and the only difference between an attendee and an appointer, uh, appointment of a board appointment is that the, the, uh, whoever's appointed can make a motion and vote, but, you know, everything else is just advisory. I mean, there's, there's a very mistaken conception out there that, that these boards pass laws and things of that nature. They do not. They make recommendations to the council. It's just strictly advice, and the council can discard that at any time, you know, and we have in the past. I mean, it isn't, it's a, it isn't a lock on, on policy, you know, that we have. We want resident input. We want to know how, what you're thinking, how you're doing. The boards are our lifelines, so, you know, for, for stuff like that, but it's not carved in stone. You know.
But Gary, start now. How big of a board do you want to start with? Seven? And then apply your rule from there on?
Yeah, I would say, let's see what, let's see where it goes, uh, you know, so I'd keep it at seven. And then if it, you know, if all of a sudden we've got all fifteen, you know, maybe we need to talk, maybe we need to break it up into two parts, two parts or so. I don't know. It's a great problem to have, you know, I, I, hopefully we have it, but I, you know, I kind of, you know, maybe, maybe not, you know.
Well, while, while we're on this, and, and, uh, Jim had mentioned this, and, um, I saw, uh, Bob nod his head as well. Um, I, I, I think Anna Colby would be an asset to the comp plan board.
Okay, uh, yeah, before we get into the names, um, additional names, I just want to get a consensus on whether we wanted, whether we have a consensus to move forward with Gary's idea.
I like it.
Do you have any feedback on that, David?
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
Do you have any feedback on whether you agree with Gary's idea of adding additional folks if they attend, even though they're, they're not initially appointed?
It should be rubber stamped in. I, I, I don't think it should be just like, uh, automatically clicked in. Uh, the council should be, um, part of this decision.
Yeah, that's what I said, was you, we would make a motion to, to, uh, include them if they showed up. Six, uh, six meetings.
Yeah, okay, then that's fine. And that would be, then that would be fine, because I, I remember, uh, how, um, unfairly treated Noel was, and he was religiously following the comp plan board. And, um, I think that, uh, when he was removed, that was just unfair, and if, if that, had they had a rule like that at the time, then Noel probably could have got back on the board.
Yeah, I'm not, no argument here on that.
Uh, I was trying to get in. I like Gary's idea, but I'm, I'm still very concerned about three excused or unexcused. Honestly.
Well, we'll get to that, Bob. We'll get to that, Bob. That's, that's the next topic, one, one topic at a time.
That was one of his comments, though, Steve. That's why I'm bringing it up.
I understand. I'm trying to get a consensus on the adding, and then we'll, we'll talk about the excused, unexcused, and we'll talk about limiting the, the, the boards or not.
Um, Mr. Mayor, one more time?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, Gary, would there be a limit on how, the size of the board?
That's up to us now. Uh, I, you know, I, I defer to you guys. What do you, what do you think? You know, I, I would imagine you know, I'm thinking an odd number, like nine or ten or eleven, you know, maybe, uh, i- if it got that far. I, I don't think it's going to happen, to be honest, but it's a, it's a commitment, you know. It's a, it's a, it's a big commitment to, you know, come and sit in those meetings for hours, you know, going through everything.
If we, if we had, you know, if we had nine or eleven people there that had the commitment to show up every month, um, that's a beautiful thing.
Yeah, that's a great problem to have.
Yeah, the, the discussions would be slower, and slower, but it would be worth it to have all that input, so.
Abs- absolutely, I concur a hundred percent.
Let, let me add, add this point. What happens to the current at-large members? Well, the one, maybe the, uh, Parks Board, uh, the. Maybe the parks board, the, the current at-large members, is this going to change any aspect of their participation? Their commitments, their votes?
I don't think so.
No, wouldn't they be part of the board, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Mayor, wouldn't they be part of the board already at large? I mean, if they're approved tonight, I mean.
We don't, I don't think we want to bump anybody off that I can, that I can tell. I mean, you know.
All right, well, let's put it this way. Is there anybody that objects to trying that, that idea? All right, so, so I think we have a consensus to go ahead and do that, and we all know we can blame Gary if it doesn't work, so.
No problem. I'll paint a target on the front. Front and back. One for the residents, the other one for the council.
Good idea, Gary. Thank you. So then the other, the other side of that, Bob, sorry to cut you off. I just wanted, I just wanted to get this one at a time. But the other, the other side of that is the unexcused absences and how we want to handle those. We, I think we heard a couple of different ideas. Frankly, I'm fine with either one. I just think we need to come up with a better solution. One is that all absences are treated as unexcused. And the other is that it would be administrative and we would register whether they are excused or unexcused.
Only about. It sounds good.
I like the administrative point of view, because if somebody's out of town on business or somebody's, you know, on vacation, I don't think they should be penalized for that. I mean, everybody needs to remember the boards only meet maybe ten, eleven times out of the year. They don't meet twelve months out of the year. And we need to, we need to make that, clarify that right off the bat here, because we take off, most boards take off in July. And some boards take off in July and December, depending on, you know, what their activities are. So it's not a, you know, to me, you know, I, I served on the board since the town was founded. So, you know, to me, it's not a hardship. It's a pleasure. You know, to do that. So I'm a little jaded in my way I look at it, you know, positively. But, you know, but I, I think if we go with administrative absences, you know, whether it's excused or not.
Administeratively moved from the board, there's nothing to stop them from just saying council, you know, I had such and such happen and I would like to be reappointed. That shouldn't be a problem.
No, it should not. No, it should not, because that tells me that you want to be on the board. You know, a lot of the people just don't show up and they're gone and, you know, do nothing, you know, some people.
I, I, I kind of would be leaning toward the treating absences as an absence.
Say that one more time, David. I'm sorry.
I, I, I would be kind of leaning toward, unless I'm convinced otherwise, that treating an absence as an absence. Three absences, three consecutive absences, administrative removal, you can petition back for the council.
Even if they're approved or you're out of town?
Jim, what's your thoughts?
That's a tough call.
I don't, I, I don't like the idea of punishing somebody if they're going to take off for vacation or if there's an emergency in the family or something happening. I don't see punishing people for that.
Emergency.
I, I mean, there's, you know, somebody's father gets sick, somebody's brother gets sick. Are you and the wife plan a trip to Australia and go? You're going to be punished for that? I'm not sure that's the right way to go.
Why don't we, why don't we make it, why don't we make it three unexcused? You know, no shows.
Isn't it that way now, Gary?
You don't do any unexcused.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't enforce it.
We don't enforce it.
We should enforce it, right?
This, but this would take it out of the hands of the committee. It would just be registered by the staff liaison as, as.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make, we'll make the staff liaison the bad person.
Let, let me just throw something in there as well to Jim's, Jim's concern. If emergencies happen, if, you know, you happen to have three emergencies in a year and you are subject to be removed from the board, you call the council member that appointed you or, or call Andy if you're at large and explain what's going on. And if it's, if it's me, I'd let everybody know that, hey, this guy's going through a rough patch right now and I'm going to reappoint him, you know, and hopefully the person wouldn't make me make me look bad by taking another three or four emergencies in a year, but sometimes that happens too.
I think that's a great idea. We can make Andy the bad guy, no problem.
Bingo.
You know, I think it's a great idea. Hey, you know.
You know, I don't want to, I don't want to punish anybody, but I also don't want to punish the board, the people that don't show up and we don't have a quorum. It happens all the time. They're the ones who are being punished.
So why don't we, why don't we make it within Andy's purview? I'll get it aside. That way he can decide if that.
I mentioned him. I'm sorry, Gary.
But, but.
I, I mentioned Andy only for the at-large. We would, you know, if, if it's somebody I, I would expect them to contact me.
Yeah, exactly. The, 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 the appointees that we all have, the one each, that, that's a different kettle of fish. We've got a, you know, that's up to us to police that.
Yep, yep. Andy, do, do we send a letter out to, to our board appointees with any kind of guidelines when, when they, before the first meeting?
Oh yeah, they receive a policy handbook. It's all spelled out. It's all reviewed in the first meeting.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, Bob, I read mine cover to cover.
Yeah.
I did, yeah. It's a good book. It really is.
I don't think it was in existence when I was on the boards.
Actually, Russell put that together and I give him a lot of credit for it. Very good, very good.
All right, so that's two things we got figured out, right?
All right, so, so what I heard there is that we will just go, we won't distinguish between excused and unexcused. Is that, is that correct?
No, I, that's not what I took away.
Okay, so we are going to just. Okay.
I took, I took away from it that it, that if you had an excused absence, but the, the council, the board did not vote on it. It's an administrative function by the staff liaison and Andy. That they would be the, they would be the determining factor if this is.
Of whether it's excused or not?
Yeah.
Okay, because I think what happens now is we get people who say, well, I can't make it. They'll notify the liaison and then the board votes on it and just gives them an excused absence without any understanding of why they're out.
Yeah, I, I'd like, I think that's probably part of the problem, because nobody wants to sit there and vote somebody out.
Right.
Right.
I think that's, you know, so once again, we're making the staff or Andy's the bad guy.
Keith, I know that, let me just make a quick comment, Steve, to Keith. Keith, I know that the charter, I don't remember the specifics of it, names of board appointments, I believe there's, or it covers it. I want to make sure we don't run afoul of our charter.
I, I don't think that they're covered in the charter.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll look, but okay.
Nothing you've said so far raises any concerns to me from a legal standpoint, or I've chimed it.
Well, I think my understanding is we're supposed to make the appointments, whether it's at large or not. So I guess we're, we're, never mind. We're covering that by the council.
A, or a prior council passed a regulation that stated that every council member has the right to announce their appointment to the board at any time. If their appointment quits, et cetera, or they want to appoint a vacancy. But the, the council would approve an at-large member to the board as a collective council.
Got it. Thank you.
So let me, let me recommend this, that we go ahead and use the administrative function to determine whether it's excused or unexcused. Let's try that for this year. And Bob, if it's not, if it's still, we're running into the same issue, then we'll get stricter next year and, and go with what you're saying. Where all, all absences are just unexcused. Is that, is that agreeable or?
Yeah, sounds good.
Bob, are you, follow what I'm saying, Bob?
With that, if everybody else is uncomfortable with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. We'll give it, give it a shot.
Yeah, yeah, but let's bring it up again next year, because honestly, if it's, if it still is not working the way we hope it will, then, then we can get stricter.
I agree. I concur.
Okay, all right, so. So we got a consensus on those two. We don't need to take a vote on those, do we, Keith? It's just a, just kind of a policy of, of how we're going to operate.
Great policy decision.
Okay, all right. So then let's go back to the comp board there. Let's first talk about how many members we would like to initially put on that board. And then we'll talk about the two at-large appointments.
So that means we're going to put seven on? Just doing the math.
Sorry about that. Freudian slip, Freudian slip on that one, but I'm sorry, I said that that was, that was my preference, but, but we're here to discuss it. So we can go higher. We can, you know, I'm.
I'm teasing. I'm fine, I'm fine with seven. If you guys want to go to nine, I'm fine with nine.
I'm comfortable with seven to begin.
Jim, where are you?
Yes, seven. I, I, I'd like to see seven. That's, that's the number that, that I've sat with and it seems to work pretty well. And even the discussions then can get quite intense and long with seven people. I don't know what would happen with nine or 10. I think you'd be there all night.
Bobby, okay?
Yep.
Okay, that was easy.
Okay. So.
Now we got to.
Yeah.
Right, so you have five appointments, you need two more.
Right, and I think definitely, based on kind of the polling of the council members that we would like to appoint Doug McKay to that board, is that correct or not?
That's, that wouldn't be my feeling.
All right, now, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not making the decisions.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of appointing Doug.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll take it off the table. If I, if I can't get five yes votes, I don't.
Okay.
Steve, we, we have a member that was on the board. He's now, I guess relegated to at-large. I don't know how that happens, but he was moved down. That's Robert Sirota. He has been on the board for probably close to two years. He came in when I did. And I just like to throw out that name again of Anna Cole.
I certainly would support both of those names.
Like, I, I don't, I don't have a problem.
So then I make a motion that we.
David, David, do you have a thought on that?
Oh, sorry.
Do you support those two?
Um, no, I, that's okay. It's fine. Very fine.
So I make a motion then to approve the resolution, given the names that we just, we just appoint, we're going to appoint. I guess it's Noel, Jason, Joseph Allshutes, Lori Parish, George, yeah, George Morris, Anna Cole Dyson, Robert Sirota.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Is there any public comment on this?
Mayor, we have two speakers that raised their hand on this issue. The first person is Dee Schroder. Ms. Schroder, are you there?
Yes, I am. First, I'd like to say, I'm happy that you guys did come up with Doug's name. I'm disappointed that it wasn't unanimous. I was always told that people don't just get put on boards because somebody wants them on them. They have to apply and they have to request to be on a board. I did such thing and my name hasn't come up. But, but this Anna out in Country Estates, did she fill out an application? Did she call town hall? Did she ask to be put on it? Or is she just being put on it to keep me off of it? Now, I know that sounds like a little bit of anger there, and there is. We have rights, the citizens do, out here. And if you want us out of the town and you want us to back off, that's what you need to say. You need to grow a pair, you guys, and just say, we don't want you anymore. There's people sitting on this board that's only been in this town a few years that you appointed. I've been here for thirty-five. I've watched all your kids grow up. I know this town and I know where it's going. These people don't. We've got people sitting on this board that you have on here right now that have never, ever been involved in this town, in anything we've ever done. They have been vacant for at least eighteen years. And some have only lived here a few. And you can justify that? You ought to be ashamed of yourself, guys. Seriously. This is getting people involved? This is extending that olive branch? That's the best you can do? I'm really disappointed, but it isn't going to end there and you know it. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker, Mayor, is I believe Noel Hollingsworth. Mr. Hollingsworth? Can you hear us?
I'll pass. Thank you very much. You already covered what I was going to cover.
All right, thank you. All right, Mayor, we have no other speakers on this issue.
Okay. Any other council comment? All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Brian Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the drainage board.
Okay, would you like me to read the resolution, Mayor?
Yes, please.
This is the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board, restating the board's purpose and objectives, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members and providing an effective day.
Thank you. So we have the five appointees. Andy, if you want to read through those.
Sure, the five appointees that I have from all of you, for the mayor, James Starkweather, for the vice mayor, Kirk Hobson Garcia, for councilmember Albritton, Lee Lester, for councilmember Kozinski, Ed Gonzalez, and for councilmember Jablonsky, your deal for one day.
Great, thank you. All right, so on this board, we also have a number of other individuals. What?
Fourteen.
Yeah, yeah, that would like to be appointed.
Back to the seven, we have two that are at-large, George Morris and Brian O'Toole.
I, I, I'll say that I, I would strongly like to see George Morris reappointed.
I would agree.
I agree. He's got so much knowledge with this, but comes to this.
I don't have a recommendation for the other. I'll leave that open.
Well, I think we should, Brian has been on it for years now.
Yep.
So I think we should, you know, put him in the same category. I think that's our seven right there. I mean, the other, the other six people can attend the meetings and they can achieve a pathway to get on the board like we're going to experiment with, you know, with attending the six meetings in a row. You know, or, or what, you know, what have you. I'll make a motion to approve the list as we just decided.
And that includes Brian O'Toole, right?
Just wanted to confirm. Correct. Okay, correct.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, David.
Are you guys not hearing me?
Yes. No, I heard, I heard you, Bob.
Yeah, Bob, Bob actually. Vice Mayor made the second, yes.
Oh.
I heard Bob.
Sorry.
That's all right.
The deaf guy heard Bob.
Yeah, half the time I'm on mute, so no problem.
I missed it. All right, any further discussion on this motion from the council?
There are no hands up, Mayor.
And, okay, no public. All right, Russell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman? Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Meatbreakers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're two for two.
All right. Okay, Russell, if you can read the next motion in.
The next item is the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Fire Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members and providing an effective day.
And Andy, if you can read in the initial five?
I would be happy to, Mayor. For the Fire Advisory Board, the appointment for Mayor Brian Cruz is Vince Lombardi. For Vice Mayor Hartman, Mike Fisickelli. For Councilmember Albritton, Jeff Strickland. For Councilmember Kozinski, Tina Spires. And for Councilmember Jablonsky, Jeff Kastner.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so. All right, so with this one here, in the past, I think we, we have had more than five on this board as well. And I think, you know, I'm certainly open to having more than five on this board personally myself. I think it'd be great to have some additional folks on here.
We have Matthew Ammonson who was on it before.
Yeah, Andy, just a question about him. Does he live in town? I know he was a volunteer, but he's left the volunteer fire department. Does he still live in town?
Does, he lives in Deans Ranches.
Okay.
I'm sorry, in Green Meadows.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we have that application from Harrington, Gary Harrington. Read his application, firefighter, seems pretty knowledgeable. And that's what the, you know, the board would be, so I, I, you know, look at his name.
Okay, I think that would be a great addition.
I do too.
Yep.
So are we comfortable with seven members on this board?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah. David, you all right?
I'm no problem at all.
Okay.
Jim, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion for the seven people that we mentioned, the five appointees and the two at large.
Second. I seconded.
Right, thank you, Gary. So that is the five plus Gary and Matthew. Sounds good. All right, any further discussion on the council? Is there any, anyone raising their hand from the public?
No, mayor, no hands raised from the public.
Okay, if we can call the roll on this, Russell.
Certainly, mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, you can read the next item, item number eleven.
This is the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Recreation, Forestry and Natural Resources Advisory Board, ratifying the board's purpose and objectives, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you, Russell. And Andy, if you can read off the initial.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. The, the five appointments that I have for Mayor Bright Cruz, Gage Chapels, for Vice Mayor Hartman, Debbie Green, for council, councilmember Albritton, Dina Butler, for councilmember Kozinski, Marie Nix, and for councilmember Jablonsky, Deborah Goff Rose.
Very good, thank you. All right, so I, I do think that this is one of the boards where more than seven is a good, is a really good thing, because we have a lot of parks in town. People live in different areas of town. They, you know, they get firsthand knowledge of things that are going on in the parks or should be going on in the parks or should not be going on at the parks. And, and I just think this is, this is a board that really benefits from more folks being on it. I do think that it will be more successful with the new policies that we've adopted tonight in being able to meet and, and, and get work done, so. So I think we're in the right direction, but I, 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 I think that this is a good opportunity for folks that have not, that have shown interest in being on a board, that were not appointed in those first three boards. This would be a good place. I'll just, I'll leave it there.
Oh, diplomatic.
Thanks.
Well said. How many more do you want to include? Because we have, we have two people that wish to be reinstated, Chris Brownlow and Lana Eichel. They're both attendees. You know. Come to the board, so I, I have no problem including both of them. You know, that brings it to seven, and then you want to go two more?
I, I would, I would. I'd like to go two more or even more than that.
Okay. Wendy Halberg?
Yep.
As one of those.
I mean, I, I, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I was hearing silence, so I was going to throw out another name, Lori Morris.
Yeah, I mean, the names that, 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 that jump out, the ones that I, I, I would love to see Sage on there. I'd love to see Wendy on there. I'd love to see Lori on there and Cheryl on there are the ones that I'd like to see on there.
There you go. I'll go along.
Sounds good.
There's one, I guess, well, I guess, let's vote on the, let's go through the members and then I want to add something after we go through the members. I want to propose a, a name change.
Oh, for the board?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's different. Okay. All right, so is there any further discussion from the council on those, those nominees?
So, mayor, that would take it to eleven members if I have my number, my names correct. Okay.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this?
There's no hands raised, mayor.
Okay, Russell, if you can call the roll.
Certainly. Okay, did, did we get a motion in a second?
Wait, I don't know if we.
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you.
They caught us sleeping, Gary.
What can I tell you? I just lost power.
Mayor, may I, may I ask, if we take a, a vote and then you end up changing the name, you may have to take another vote to, to incorporate that in the motion. So I don't know if you want to discuss the name change now or it's your call.
Okay, David, were you, were you thinking about changing the name of this particular board?
This board and this board only, because everybody, everybody speaks to Chris Brownlow, everybody talks about, they all refer to this as the Parks Board. There's no reference to parks anywhere. So I would like to put parks at the beginning, parks, recreation, forestry, et cetera, et cetera.
You want to make it longer?
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I think that name, Keith, I think that name, or maybe December knows, or maybe you know, Keith. I think it was picked specifically for a legal reason.
You're correct, mayor, but what councilmember Kozinski stated wouldn't change the legal reason, so I didn't jump right in. But just to remind the council, probably about ten years ago, maybe a little bit longer, the state of Florida offered grants for different environmental and recreation and other purposes. And our board had to be named this to comply with the grant requirement that required so many meetings on the topic. So the name was not determined by the town, it was determined by the state. But councilmember Kozinski's addition of the word parks will not alter the state grants.
Very good, thank you, Keith. All right, I, I have pondered that myself, David, so thank you for bringing it up. I think that would be a wise addition.
So what are we calling it?
That motion.
We would be adding.
My motion is make it parks, Parks, Recreation, Forestry and Natural Resources Advisory Board.
Oh, what is, what is the old definition? I'm not trying to split hairs here, guys, so please don't misunderstand. What is the?
So we're keeping the old.
Recreation, Forestry and Natural Resources.
The recommendation is to keep the old name, but put parks in front of it as the first.
Correct.
Yep.
So what are the ramifications of that? Is that, is that something we should, we do have a motion, a second on the table, so do we need to remove that? Or vote on, should we vote on that first and then change the name, or does it matter, the order?
I'll defer to Keith, but I think we could just have the maker of the motion and the second, or just amend their motion to include that.
Be happy to.
Does that make sense, Keith, that we just?
I, I think we need to hang on here a minute. We, whole brownout has hit our area and I think we lost Jim. I just had my whole lights all go out, luckily.
Let's wait for Jim.
Okay. Andy, can you check with Jim and see if he's on his way back, or if he's like totally out of electricity and he's?
No, he's rebooting.
He's rebooting?
I just spoke to the boss, also known as Rose.
Goes without saying.
And she said they're rebooting and trying to come back up.
Good.
Why I didn't completely go out of power, I have no idea. It just flickered and everything. The only thing that's operating is the laptop right now in the mode of.
Really?
Why, why I didn't really lose everything. Yeah, it's, it's just went, poof, everything went dark. I don't know if you guys can see it on the screen or not. And then all of a sudden, just kept going. Everything else is just in reboot mode.
Yeah, I didn't see anything here.
Apparently it's affecting, whatever it was, it's affecting an area larger than just me.
Yeah, one eighty-eighth lost power too.
Hello, Russell? Russell? Jim Albritton?
Hey, Jim, welcome back, Jim.
Good.
Yeah, buddy, I got to get the power back. Sitting here in the dark for a second. We'll see what happens here.
Is your power back on yet or not?
Yeah, the power come back on about three, four seconds ago, but it keeps flickering on, off, on, off. It's done about five times now here in the past two minutes, so.
All right.
But I'm here, I, I can hear you.
Good, good. So I'm not sure when, when we lost you, so I'll just kind of recap.
For the vote, I was, I think they were going to call a roll for the vote, for the, for the seven members on the.
Yep.
Which board, what?
Yep, on the Parks Board, on the Parks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Parks Board, yes.
So what we, what we did after you, after you dropped off.
Surprise.
We further discussed the name. David brought up a recommendation that we add parks to the start of that, that board's name, since technically it's, it's the Recreation, Forestry and a lot of other stuff, but it has not, does not have parks in the name. So we are putting parks in front of that name, leaving the rest of the name alone, but putting parks in front of it. So it's easier to identify, and we've added that into the motion itself. So when we do the motion, we'll be voting for the seven members and for that name change.
Okay, yes.
Steve, weren't we going to add the other four, or is that a separate motion?
Oh, I'm, yep, 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 you're right. All, all, what was it, eleven? Eleven. My math is not, not doing well tonight. All eleven members. So, okay, so are we all clear on, on what we're voting on? Any questions? From?
We read the names.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
I'll read them. So the names are Gage Chapels, Debbie Green, Dina Butler, Marie Nix, Debbie Goff Rose, Chris Brownlow, Lana Eichel, Sage Semeta, Wendy Halberg, Lori Morris and Cheryl Melson.
Perfect.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
I'm good.
Anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item?
There are no hands raised, mayor.
Russell, if you could please call the roll.
Certainly, mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky? Councilmember Kozinski? Vice Mayor Hartman? Mayor Bright Cruz? Motion passed.
Okay, item number twelve.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Rural Public Arts and Design Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you. Andy?
Thank you, mayor. The names that I have here are for Mayor Bright Cruz, Barbara Gonzalez, for Vice Mayor Hartman, Judy Parker, for councilmember Albritton, Joan Boyd, for councilmember Kozinski, Wendy Halberg, and for councilmember Jablonsky, Rose Albritton.
Very good, thank you, Andy. All right, and so then the question, we do have some folks, or at least one individual, or maybe several folks from, yeah, several folks from last year have served in the past that would like to be on there again. I certainly would support all of those, but that would give us an even number, so I think we would need to add to that as well. So the three that I have on the list that have served before that would like to be reinstated are Robert Sirota, Tercita Ramirez and Sage Semeta.
All that to repeat.
You want to, do you want to add Dee Schroder?
I think that would be great.
I'm fine with it.
Any, any further discussion on that from the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
There, there's one hand up, mayor, but I think it came up at the end of the discussion on the last board. It was Jason Hallberg, but he lowered, he lowered his hand. There's no additional hands up.
Okay. Okay, no public comment. Okay, Russell, if you could call a question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, item thirteen.
Yeah, item thirteen. This is the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Schools and Education Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members and providing an effective date.
Thank you. And Andy?
Thank you. The names I have are for Mayor Bright Cruz, Paige Dyson, for Vice Mayor Hartman, Debbie Green, for councilmember Albritton, Chris Brownlow, for councilmember Kozinski, Kathy Sullivan, and for councilmember Jablonsky, Jennifer Montgomery.
Great, thank you, Andy. All right.
For, for at large.
Right, we have four that have served in the past that would like to be reinstated. Rosina, Leah, Priscilla and Francesca.
And I have no problem with all of those. They're already at nine. And I'm going to give you guys all a word to the wise. Don't mess with it, it works.
I will not vary from that wisdom.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
David got it.
Any further discussion from the council? Is there any public comment on this item?
No, mayor.
Okay, Russell, if you can call a question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great, thank you. All right, item number fourteen.
Item fourteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the town council schedule for this, the calendar year two thousand twenty-one and providing an effective date.
All right, great.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion in a second. Is there any, any discussion on this item? Anything that, from an administrative standpoint, that we need to touch on?
We're following the same holidays, the, the same. We're following the same holidays, the same recognized holidays the town has recognized for the past however many years. So there's no changes to it.
Great, thank you.
Since Steve voted yes last time on, what was that, Black Friday?
That's right, that's right. I fought it, I fought it, but I finally gave in.
Yeah, that was, that was the last change. That was probably about five years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good memory, Bob. Alright, is there any public comment on this item?
There's none. No.
Alright, Russell, if you could call a question?
Councilmember Allbritton?
We got you on video, by the way. If you unmute the camera.
We can't hear you yet, Jim.
We could see you talking, Jim.
See you. Wave, yes, thumbs up or thumbs, okay, I see a big yes, we're good.
Great.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Alright, item number 15.
Item 15 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the Town Council meeting schedule for the calendar year 2021 and providing for an effective date. This is the item that we do have a change to the December dates. Mayor, we inadvertently listed December 19th, which is actually a Sunday, should be December 16th. That was an error, so we'd like to correct that in the motion.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve with that correction.
And second by Bob. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Russell, if you can call the question.
Councilmember Allbritton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item number 16.
Okay, my item number 15 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the town to piggyback the agreement between the Town of Davie and Millennium Products, Inc., an authorized reseller of Vetted Security Solutions, Inc., or known as VSS, for the installation of a license plate reader system for the Rolling Oaks community, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget for machinery and equipment, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute a purchase order not to exceed $28,000.00 and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you, Russell.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve, and I think Russell has, or Andy has some items that they could bring up about that regarding that. First off, I'd like to mention, just to, I'd like to thank one of the residents of Rolling Oaks, Gene Marshish. His guidance was instrumental. He apparently knows a lot about it. And he volunteered a lot of his time. He's worked on it for like 12, 18 months on various systems, and he added a lot to the, to the mix. And really appreciate him coming through with the right questions and getting the right answers. And so I make my motion that we approve this and Russell has some of the details, if you could, Russ.
Is there a second for the motion?
Yeah, we need a second first, yeah.
Okay.
Did we get a second? I'm sorry.
We did from David.
Okay, sorry, I didn't catch that. Thank you, Dave. Alright, so, yes, as the, as Councilmember alluded to, this is a, basically a pilot project that you're all aware of, and we contacted Davie Police to find out a little bit more about the system that they use, and they recommend the system that's being proposed to you tonight, which is a system by a company called Vetted Security and Vigilant Systems. I have on the, on the call right now, Ryan Barnett, who is the owner of both Vigilant and VSS. And he's gonna be able to answer any technical questions that you have, but in essence, what we're looking to do is to put in a license plate reader into the Rolling Oaks community that would be able to capture licenses and vehicles as they exit the community and also as they enter. So there will be a single pole set up south of Griffin Road on Mather with two camera setups that basically would capture the vehicles as they enter the community and as they exit. With the system, it will allow for the capability to capture the license plates, but not only that, we could also set up hot lists that if there's a vehicle that we're on the lookout for, this would basically flag that if they entered the community and alert our partners at the Davie PD. So that's in a nutshell where it is. And as far as the funding for the, for the project, the town received an amount associated with the Supreme Organics P3 for $30,000, and this would, this is going to come in, obviously with a quote that's listed here at less than, less than that, at $28,000. Actually, less than $28,000. I'm available to answer any questions that you might have, anything that I can't answer technically. I have Mr. Barnett on the line that can answer any questions that you might have.
Excellent, thank you, Russell. Are there any questions from the council on the system or? Awesome.
Yeah, I have a question more of the logistics. We had a, a couple of companies come in and talked the Rolling Oaks back about, well, it was before the pandemic, so it's probably close to a year ago. And one of the challenges that they discussed was how to get the, you know, the signal, the, the data back and forth between that license plate reader so that Davie can respond. And they were talking about putting dishes up, they were talking about putting an antenna up at the barn. How are we gonna do it? Are they just gonna bring it down off a local pole and tie into the phone system that way? Or how are they gonna connect this thing to the internet?
Okay, so the, the system utilizes a, basically a hotspot, much like we have deployed the council to staff for teleworking. It's a cellular signal, and so that's what's going to relay the images that are caught. That, that's basically how the system works.
Better idea. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other questions? I have some comments to make, Mayor, if there's no other question.
I, I have a question. Is there going to be any sign advising that there's a license plate reader? Sorry, my, my rescue dog's barking. He's got rescue dogitis. But is there going to be any kind of sign giving a warning? It goes back to an idea I, I knew a while ago that when, when you're driving down an expressway, there was, many years ago, there was somebody that had signaled oncoming cars to a police officer that was running radar. That person was sighted. And then, I guess, a lot of litigation came about of it, but the, the gist of it was that as long as the purpose was to make the people drive slower, that that was the effective purpose, that just, it wasn't a trap. So I just want to know, is there going to be any kind of a sign warning, or is this just gonna be kind of hidden?
I could, I mean, I can try to address that at, at this, at this point. What's been proposed from the vendor does not include signage, but certainly if that's council's wish, I'm sure that we could certainly work something out there.
My, my thoughts are that unless there's a legal requirement, I wouldn't want signage.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that, that could become a target for, you know, a paint bomb or something, you know. If there's no, if there's no legal requirement, Keith, you may know something or not, but I, I would say leave it alone.
Maybe Ryan knows from other implementations?
Mr. Barnett?
Ryan, are you there? Can you hear us?
Sorry, I was trying to take myself off mute. I mean, there's no legal implication to it one way or another. It's connecting back to the PD database, and as far as the PD goes, they can always cite operational security for the system to not disclose camera locations, as well as any images retained from this or images from public records requests in Florida State Senate Bill 226. So as far as, you know, it's totally a community decision. Hollywood place, your license plate is being recorded on their side of LPR trailers. They're probably the only ones in South Florida that have given notification.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I'd rather not, you know, put any notice out there. Be subject to vandalism, you know, things of that nature. We want to get the bad guy, not let him know.
Right.
Something's going on. Is there any other question before I go into my little soliloquy?
Go for it, Gary.
Hey, thank you very much. Been waiting, I've been waiting months for this. This, this is a pilot project funded by a donation that was negotiated a while back. I, I'm looking at a program of doing this across the town based on the success of this one. And I really think that we need to make our town, you know, and I, and I realize everybody's gonna agree with this, the safest, most secure town that we have. We have numerous break-ins, landscape trailers, homes, you know, constant where the people know how to avoid video cameras. You know, all this other stuff where they're actually cutting apart hurricane-proof glass window doors and breaking in. And I would like to see us put these license plate readers strategically from US 27 to flamingo eventually, in strategic locations. You know, I don't know if we're talking four more, five more, 10 more, you know, whatever, whatever the number is. And I think we need to look forward on this into our budgetary concerns. But let's, so let's see what the success rate or, you know, how this works. And I'll come back to you guys in six months or a year with, you know, more thoughts on it, based on the data and based on what we're doing. So this is like a grand plan that I would like to, you know, implement across our town. You know, and, you know, possibly go on mobile trailers, you know, I-75, you know, Sterling Road, obviously. All the major entrances in our town, they're key points, 166th, 185th, 186th, all that, so. And Bob, I saw your hand up. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, Gary, at work, we do pilots and proofs of concept all the time. I mean, and that's what we're doing here, and I think, I think it's a great idea. I love this idea. We've been talking about it for a couple of years with Roka, so I'd love to see it expand across the town. But at work, when we do pilots and proofs of concept, we define our success criteria. How do we know this is successful and how long do we want to wait before we call it successful?
Good, good question, and I don't have an answer to that.
Well, I think it's something we can toss around. We don't need an answer tonight.
Yeah.
One, one thing I can definitely share with you guys to kind of help show some statistics, and given this is from a perimeter system, the system in St. John's County was our first kind of major flagship deployment. And it was a perimeter, perimeter LPR system countywide. It consists of 166 LPR systems around St. John's County. Most of their crime is transient, as I'm assuming most of the crime in your community is, meaning it was coming in from the Jacksonville area or from others outside of like Ponte Vedra, you know, it's, people coming into St. John's County, right? So in the first five months, I think they had a, I'll forward the numbers, like 212 arrests, 37 stolen vehicles, 14 missing persons located, blah, blah, blah. But in about an eight-month period, time period, there was a 37% reduction in crime across the county. So from a police department level, these guys track comstat reporting and everything else for numbers that they have to submit back up to FDLE. So, you know, it, well, it might be hard to attribute any kind of drop to, you know, any, any individual drop in time to one LPR being put up. In this particular case, we can absolutely get metrics on the total number of detections, total number of hits, and all that information is gonna be directly to Davie PD. So one, they can give metrics across, you know, number of total alerts the system gives, and they can also give, you know, justification for the system and alerts that they receive and they process off the LPR, as far as actual arrests they make, that they can share with the community to justify the purchase. So, anyway, wanted to throw that out there, and I'll share the, the email with the St. John's County statistics that I, I just referenced as well.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Yeah, this is, this is like a, I don't want to say a dream, because I don't want to be glib about it, but it's, it's, it's like a plan I've been cooking in my head for quite some time. Just never had the, never had the funding and never had the, you know, the, all the what ifs that we've, we've since crossed, you know. So I'd like to, I'd like to move forward with this, and then the, the, the really great asset I like about this is it goes directly to the police department. There's no middleman, nothing in between. When a, when a, a problem license plate comes through, yeah, Rolling Oaks or across those cameras, it pings. They, they know within a millisecond, you know, that they've got a problem in, in that area, and the police are able to respond immediately. And I think that's really what we need, you know, in our town. So I'd appreciate everybody, you know, support on this.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's, it's great to see it coming together, and, and I support that, you know, additionally, seeing these throughout town will only make our community safer. So it's, it's a great start. Hopefully it's successful. I have no, I, I think it will be successful, and be great to see it move forward.
And I really do want to thank the resident Gene Marshish again for, he was really making us, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's and, and really asked all the right questions. It was really good, and his expertise really helped out. So just wanted to mention that again.
Thank you.
Got a question for Andy. Given the, the metrics that, that Mr. Barnett was talking about, and, and, you know, what is our success factor? What, what do we call success? Could you reach out to Davie and see what they've done? They've already got license plate readers, so maybe they can give us some guidance or advice, or just some ideas?
Sure, I'd absolutely be happy to follow up with them on that.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea, Bob. Thanks for bringing that up.
Call a question?
Yeah, any other, any other comments from council?
I, I think that this is something great to keep the bad guys out.
Absolutely.
And we got hands raised for the public. Yeah, Mayor, we have two speakers from the public that would like to speak on this issue.
Perfect. Let's proceed with that.
Okay, the first speaker is Debbie Green. Ms. Green, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, you have two minutes.
I, I didn't want to speak on this one. You just, you went so fast on your calendar item. I just want to make you all aware that September 16th is Yom Kippur. So maybe keep you, you, you out of the doghouse. You might want to go just consider that.
Okay.
But you moved so quickly that I, by the time I pulled it up on the calendar, you were done.
Sorry about that.
We can, we can modify that.
For the meeting, for the meeting schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have, we don't, we don't have a meeting, we don't have a meeting, we don't have a meeting scheduled for September 16th.
Oh, I thought that's what you, I thought it moved from the 18th to the 16th or something.
No, we moved the December meeting from the 19th to the 16th. The September meetings are the 9th and the 23rd.
Okay, then we're good, sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Norris, thank you. Now we had another member of the public.
Yes, we do. I believe it's Noel Hollingsworth. Hang on one second, let me just get to him. Mr. Hollingsworth, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have two minutes.
Okay. The question on these readers is, is there a maintenance fee? And if so, how much is it per year or by month? And also, how long is the data going to be kept on this film that's being taken of all the licenses that are going in and out of Rolling Oaks? As far as the timeframe. Thank you, that's my only two questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mayor, would you like me to address that first question?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, so the maintenance, the annual maintenance is $1,050 per year. As far as the, the retention of the, the images, we would obviously be prescribed to follow the state law on how long we have to keep those images for. So we have to follow the records management guidelines on that, or the records laws on that. Currently, I'm, sorry to say, I'm not aware of how long that.
Currently, I'm sorry to say, I'm not aware of how long that is actually. Have to follow up with Davy PD. I don't have an answer for you on that. But maybe, maybe Ryan knows the answer to that.
Yes, sir. The state law is three years is the max that they can keep it. On top of that, Davy PD does retain theirs for the full three years allowed by state law. From our side, if the community does choose to want to have a less retention than that, we can create a client portal account, which would basically create a sub-account for Southwest Ranches that wouldn't have any law enforcement data. There would kind of just be a pass-through account to go to the city of Davie where we could limit retention. That was, to that account that was being pushed back. So when it was deleted from the town's account, it would also be deleted from any law enforcement account, Davie or any other account Davie was sharing with. So pretty much you guys could set your own policy or you could just go by Davie's, which is using the max allowed by state law.
Great, thank you.
Also need to mention that we've got it to the first two years. Is the warranty on the, is that correct, Russell? Two years?
That is correct. Mr. Barnett, to his credit, agreed to try to help the town as much as possible. And instead of the standard one-year warranty, which is standard for his contracts and is actually included in the project quotation, he's, he's come back and offered to extend that warranty for two years.
Great, thank you.
And being modest, we asked him, that was agreed to right before this meeting, so that was all on him.
And for the, the maintenance, what's included with that? I assume that there are occasional software updates that are included with that. Is there any, does that relate to any maintenance of the hardware of the reader itself? And any issues mechanically or with that?
So the $1,050 a year covers basically what's, what's the hosting of the data. So it's a CLK, it's a camera license key. So every law enforcement agency in the state that has cameras with us, which is every single major sheriff's department in the state now, all goes back to one server. So one of the advantages to the system is that they can, you know, do like geozones, so they're like common crimes, right, that meet like similar MOs. The agencies can cross over with like the town of Southwest Ranches, the, this neighborhood in Davie, this neighborhood in Davie, all had similar break-ins and say, show me the common plates across these three areas. Any agency in the state can do that. So what it allows for is a, is a, is a really nice data sharing network where all these law enforcement agencies can push out like suspect vehicles that don't necessarily meet the, let's say prerequisites for a BOLO, like they're not, they don't have an active warrant out for the vehicle, but they might, you know, suspect this vehicle from burglaries, they can load that vehicle in and then that vehicle works when it drives into the town. So that's, that's the major advantage in that, that fee covers the hosting of all of your data on that remote server that's located down in Miami Beach, on our server inside of Miami Beach Police Department's infrastructure. And that's where we pull down the law enforcement hot list from the FDLE network inside of that, that, that Miami Beach infrastructure. So that's kind of, that covers your hosting fees, that covers your software updates for life. So basically we're auditing your software updates to your point. Yes, absolutely. That includes those. It also includes remote tech support for life. Now, the two years of service and warranty, basically, we've, we've got office done at Sunrise, we've got bucket trucks down there, and it all happens in those cameras, short of vandalism or force majeure. We come out, we replace it, we fix it, absolutely no cost to you guys. So you've got two years of that built in, thanks to Russell. And then if you do want to extend that at that two-year point, it's an optional warranty of $650 per camera per year. So in this particular case, it'll be $1,300.
Great, thank you. All right. Any other questions or discussions before we vote?
We have a hand raised.
We do, okay.
Yeah, we have. Actually, I got two now.
Yeah, the first one is Jason Hallberg. Hallberg, can you hear us? Mr. Hallberg? All right, let me try, the next person will go back to Mr. Hallberg. The next speaker would then be Lori Morse.
Hope he answers.
Ms. Morse, can you hear us? Try hitting star six on your phone. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, actually, Jim is going to ask the question because we're having computer issues, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess you remember some of my discussions about license plate readers years ago. Back in the day, a few years ago, there was a company called Vinplate. And Vinplate ended up getting a contract with ICE. Would your database be integrating with Vinplate at all?
No, sir. We don't integrate to Vinplate.
Well, with the amount of people that would probably be coming from, let's say, Texas and, and Arizona and places like that, being the Latin people that we might have in this area, human trafficking and drugs, to be exact, it might be good to know if there was already suspect cars heading this way. But you would never know that with your database. At some point, doesn't it, doesn't it integrate? Or do you, you, you discover a vehicle you want to do more research on?
So the, the way this system works is it's scanning all the license plates and retaining that data for about a time. And the metadata associates has a GPS location and overview image of the vehicle. And it's matching the OCR read of the physical extraction of like the numerical digits on the license plate.
I understand all that.
Yep. So what, basically, the only thing we're matching is, is a static hot list. It's provided by FDLE, which is between 3 and 3.5 billion hot plates on the list. And that's like your FLDHS and B, which is your suspended licenses, expired tags, expired licenses, stolen vehicles, stolen license plates, Amber Alerts. We also are the repository for the FBI National Hotlist, which is any violent wanted felon, endangered at-risk child, et cetera, kind of high-profile alerts like that that the FBI pushes to the system. But as far as Vinplate, I'm not aware of any Vinplate alerts coming in the system or any data shared from the system back to Vinplate. And that's not a company I've ever heard of in 12 years of LPR.
Ever heard of Vinplate?
Okay, hey, Jim, Jim?
Okay, I, excuse me, I didn't mean to get excited there, but Vinplate was the leader in this thing. And based on the cross-country traffic that you get with bad guys now, even burglary gangs now are going outside the state. And I, I just can't imagine why you wouldn't get some alerts from across the country.
All right, okay. Thanks, Jim. It doesn't interface. So that's, I mean, that's the answer to the question. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, the next, let's go back to Mr. Hallberg. Mr. Hallberg, can you hear us?
Yes, hopefully you can hear me this time.
We can.
Okay, my apologies. That was on my end. I think it's a great idea. And my only question was, is the annual $1,050 fee where the hosting and the software updates, is that just for this installation? So in other words, as we hopefully, this is successful with this program and you end up rolling out to other locations without, within Southwest Ranches, is each one of those installations going to be an additional $1,050 or is the $1,050 for our entire town? That's my question.
Yeah, that does, that is per camera. So what increases, the camera count increases, but it does decrease once you get over a certain amount of cameras. So since it's going directly to Davy PD and you guys are going to, you know, the bill for these cameras is going to you, you do have the advantage that they already have, I want to say, six cameras, so it puts you at eight. So it drops from 525 to 475 per camera for 15 to 30, 31 to 60 drops down to 425. And then 60 plus drops to 275. Per camera per year. Yes, sir.
On a major scale.
I, I did have a question about the maintenance fee that was raised earlier. I heard the 650 per camera. That, that would, that could, never mind, the question got answered, I recall. He said it covers everything but force majeure and direct vandalism. So if something, a component breaks, we're covered.
That's correct, right, Ryan?
Did we?
I think we lost his cell phone. He's back on now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. Is there, who is the manufacturer? And are there competitors to the, the manufacturer that Ryan uses?
Ryan, if you can hear us on the cell, try to use star six to unmute your phone.
There you go.
Hey, sorry about that. I got muted, I guess. So yeah, there, there are other license plate reader companies, but we are the only license plate reader company and used by BSO and by Davy PD. So in order to get alerts through their system, it would have to come in through here. Or we can't interface with third-party LPRs, but there is a $1,500 per camera per year charge. So it depends on, you know, it's, you know, however you want to do it.
Great, thank you. All right. Any other questions for Ryan or just general comments?
Call a question?
I think we're good. All right. Call the question, Russell?
Okay, Mayor, Councilmember Albritton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Breakers?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, very good. Item number.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Ryan. Item number 17 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the town to piggyback off of an agreement between the Broward Sheriff's Office and Motorola Solutions, Inc. for the migration of the Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Rescue Department's radio system to the P-25 radio system, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget for machinery and equipment, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute a purchase order not to exceed $11,000 and zero cents and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Is there, yeah, Andy, is there kind of a?
Yeah, Mayor, if I, if I can speak to this for just a moment.
Yeah.
You probably recall from your, your previous stint on the council, the county started moving towards a new radio communication system. And we started budgeting and purchasing radios towards that transition. This is now the final step and we have those radios. Now we're transitioning over to the new system. And so that's, this represents that, that, that final step to get us there. And I know Chief Bennett is on the line if there are any questions. Thank you, Matt.
Good, thank you. All right, is there any questions from the council or discussion or questions for Chief Bennett from the council? I do know this is, as you, Andy, as you've mentioned, this has been a transition for a number of years. We've known it's coming. And I think we did the right thing in kind of chopping it up, I think over three years, as I recall, was how we split it up so that it was not a major impact on any year. So. All right, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one hand raised. I believe it's Noel Hollingsworth. Mr. Hollingsworth, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. My question is very simply, is this $11,000 in the existing budget or is this a new over-the-budget type thing? So thank you very much.
Thank you, no. Marty, can you answer that, that question on that one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's a budget amendment required because we had no estimates at time of original budget. It's coming from a restricted fire control fund balance. So money has been set aside, separate apart from the unassigned general fund balance. So this is required so we can fund the purchase and it is brand new for fiscal year 21.
Okay, so will there be a separate budget amendment coming forth for this or this is?
No, legal and the clerk and finance all work together and it's all-inclusive within this resolution, which includes the budget amendment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on this item? All right, Russell, if you can call the question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breakers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Number 18 is the annual review of the charter officers. An item that's always dear, near and dear to my heart. I've gotten into plenty of trouble over this one. And so, but Andy, I know you, you have a request on this one, so let me turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Putting it on the, the December agenda does meet my and Russell and Marty's contractual obligations. But as has been the tradition for eight and a half years now, every year we put it on in December and then we carry it over into January to allow time for some discussions and some information to be supplied to council members. You all may solicit input from residents, you know, however you want to go through that process. But it allows us a little bit of time to, to, to go through this and not just throw it on the agenda. You know, publish the book on a Friday, have the Thursday agenda and say, here we go. So the, the goal is to allow you more time. Certainly in this case, we, you know, Mayor, you and I have worked together before. We have two council members who are new to this and have not worked with the charter officials. So we wanted to allow them a little bit more time as well.
Perfect, good.
So we would bring this back on January 25th, if that's okay, 2028.
Yeah, Bob.
So do you need a motion to table this or move this or what do we need to do next?
Just a consensus of the council because there's no resolution attached to this. There's no advertising requirement.
Okay, you go with that?
I think it's fine.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So, so we're looking at what, what's the date that you would like to see this moved to?
Would be the, the January meeting. I think Russell said January 28th.
That's correct.
Okay. Is, first from the council, is there any, any discussion on that? Any concerns about moving this into the January meeting?
Not at all, not for me.
No.
No.
Okay, I think we have a consensus.
Yeah, thank you. We'll be furnishing you all with year-end town accomplishments, et cetera, so that help you in your evaluation process.
Perfect.
Mayor, because there's essentially two new council members, just to explain how the process is done, is Andy meets with both Marty and Russell and they come together and discuss what they essentially feel that they are looking for, for the past year's service based on the fiscal shape of the town and things that they have done. At that point, we generally draft a memo, which we send to the council for consideration based on past councils and, and at least two on the present council and now bring yourself back, Mayor. Most of the time, it's based on a bonus-based system. If you feel it's warranted so that it's not locked in annually, but at the discretion of the council annually. So if that's the same way, Mayor, that you and the council want to do it going forward, that's how we will proceed.
I'm comfortable with that. I think that makes, it works out best for the town. I can say that. And if the staff is, is agreeable with that, I think it's, it's a good option to go forward with.
Yeah, it works.
Yep.
All right.
I do, I do have one more thing there.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Excellent. I was hoping that's what it was.
I want to.
I tried to keep a straight face. I actually tried.
I want to wish everybody a happy holiday.
Absolutely.
It was a, it was definitely a very interesting meeting this evening and very happy with the outcome of the meeting.
I have to go outside and see how many eggs are out. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Holidays, everybody.
Yeah, happy holidays.
Stay safe.
Thank you all. Happy holidays. Good night.
Good night.